...done for us at times that would replicate. And if there is any suggestion that it is an unsafe route, then transport would be provided at no cost. But let me come to the wider points because I'm sure that you were wanting rather more than just that simple answer. In the public consultation around the budget, we looked at three things around school, home-to-school transport. The first was increasing charges for discretionary payment, where parents could, if there was a seat on a bus, pay a charge for their child to take a seat. We had proposed raising that so that it came nearer to the cost of full recovery, because it's very heavily subsidised at the moment. The second thing was to bring the distances at which we would start to provide free transport into line with those set out by the Welsh Government, because Monmashia has traditionally been more generous in its interpretations. And I think that might have been at the heart of what you were questioning me about. And the third thing is about the development of safe routes to school. Because as I've just alluded to in my answer to your question, where a walking route is not the statutory distance to get free transport, but is considered to be unsafe, then free transport would be provided, however close to the school it was. But we, let me answer them in reverse order and start with that one. We are working with MonLife to develop safe routes to school. This is part of the County Council's decarbonisation campaigns to get people walking onto bikes and scooters as round the county as much as possible. And where a safe route to school, where it's within the distance that would not qualify for transport, if the route becomes safe, parents are given one term's notice that it is now a safe route and that free transport would not be provided. If there is not a safe route, or that safe route has not passed that assessment that I talked about, then free transport would be provided until the route was deemed to be a safe one. The second one was about the charges increasing for discretionary seats. And in the light of public consultation, we have withdrawn that. The other remaining area was whether the County Council should revert to the Welsh Government guidelines on distance. We could not do that as part of the budget, because it would be a change of policy. And the County Council can only change policy around school transport after a public consultation. We may go ahead with a public consultation, but that would not then be published until next October and would come into effect the following September. In other words, if we did revert to the two- and three-mile limits in line with the Welsh Government, we would consult during the summer term. We would publish the findings of the consultation next October. And if we did change, it would come into effect in September 2024. And I hope that answers your question and what I think you were probably wanting to hear as well.
Yes, thank you, councillor. If I may ask a follow-up question. Obviously, with the decarbonisation strategy that Monmashia County Council put in place, how does that then work when a four-year-old child is walking uphill Merrick Hill that is congested all the way down to the Mathon Junction for approximately 45 minutes, breathing in all the toxic emissions from heavy traffic that's actually stationary going up Merrick Hill up towards Larkfield?
As I say, the assessments are carried out for the County Council by independent road safety experts. If their advice was that a child would be put at medical risk, then certainly we would listen to that. And that would be an area where we could use our discretion. But I would be bound by the findings of someone who is completely objective from the Education Department.
Thank you. Councillors, I'm going to take my report as read. And councillor Birch, I'd like to ask you to introduce our members of the Youth Council.
Thank you, Chair. As councillors here probably know, the Youth Service and the Youth Council conduct an annual survey of the views of young people in the county called Make Your Mark. I am told this year there were over 2,000 responses, which I'm sure you will realise knocks many of our council's public consultations into a cock hat in terms of its reach. I would like to thank everyone who took part. Here to present the results and with a presentation from the Youth Council are Youth Councillors Amanda and Eli Pickering, supported by youth worker Jade Atkins from MonLife. And I know that fellow Cabinet members and the senior leadership team will want to study the Make Your Mark results in depth and learn from them, not just in education and in leisure, but in all of our services. When we talk about how the effects of the current cost of living are affecting families and how the effects that they're having on the council's budget, it's very easy to lose sight, I think, of the particular challenges that young people are facing of coming to age in a rural county. So, thank you, Amanda Inningai. Over to you.
Sorry, that one.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. We are representatives from the Monmashia Youth Council. I'm Amanda.
And I'm Eli.
Today, we'll be talking to you briefly about who we are, the Make Your Mark ballot, as well as some plans we could do to address them. We are a group of young people aged 11 to 25 who are passionate about sharing our voices of our peers.
So, we meet weekly online and then we meet once a month in person in this room. We hold training sessions for young people, like the most recent social media training we had in the summer. And we also do residiencials to engage young people in Monmashia. So, the Make Your Mark is an annual survey of young people. Both, there's one nationally and one in Monmashia specifically. So, we take the 10 most important topics that we use to counsel some of the councils, their topics, to inform on what ones we put on the ballot. And then from that, young people vote on which one is the most important to them. So, this year there were four regions involved and 2,306 young people. So, first off, a young person will choose the topic that they think is the most important to them. Then they will tell us why they voted for that topic. And then they can add their own so that we can understand any emerging topics that might be in Monmashia. So, the 10 topics that were on the ballot this year were young carers, neurodiversity, relationships, vaping, community safety, ethnic minority, transport, climate change, health and wellbeing, and the cost of living.
Of the 2,306 people surveyed, the most voted-for concern of young people here in the county was about the cost of living crisis. This means approximately 29% of the young people surveyed think that us as a young Youth Council should focus the most on tackling the cost of living crisis for them. When we asked the young people who picked that why they have picked it, these are the common themes, the emerging themes, that they would write the most.
And then the second most voted-on topic was health and wellbeing, with 346 young people voting for it. On the ballot, it was described as providing young people with the easy and practical steps on how to improve their own health and wellbeing. When asked why they voted for this, they said that they would like more education on how to maintain their wellbeing and that they were suffering and they would like more opportunities to engage in conversations around wellbeing.
We also asked the surveyees if they had a choice, what would they put in as an extra topic? And these are the emerging themes, such as mental health, substance misuse, LGBT support, jobs in young carers, bullying, sports and after-ski activities.
We'd also like to bring the council's attention to these two topics, as we feel they need special mention. First off, to the ethnic minorities topic, as we feel the lack of data shows the need for special attention to this topic. And also vaping, we feel the results did not fully highlight the magnitude of the problem, as engaging in conversations with young people in the centres, it's been brought up way more than we think the figures really show.
In response, we have formed some plans so far to address these two top priorities and some of our emerging themes. We have been responding from our side in the Monfashia Youth Council, but we also invite you as elected members to think about how you could collaborate with us.
So, for the cost of living, some of the ideas that we've come up with to address this is in schools, the promotion of school uniform swap shops. Transport, we would like to advocate for the reduction in transport costs. And then we've been thinking about workshops, one of which is to show young people how to make low-cost nutritious meals.
Whereas to address health and wellbeing, this slide shows the three main things we're doing. I'm most looking forward to organising some workshops within schools to help people improve their health and wellbeing. For the main two and two secondary topics, we've designated project leads within the Youth Council itself. These are young people who are either knowledgeable or interested in these topics. And therefore, they would be the best to coordinate their own topic. I, for example, am the project lead for transport.
So, I'd like to take these last few moments to thank you for inviting myself and Amanda here today. We appreciate you listening to our presentation. And we hope that in the future, we can collaborate to further champion these topics in your work and in ours. If you could please consider these results to shape and develop services, apply for and allocate funding, and share news them with relevant people who can help engage young people and initiate change. Thank you.
We would like to urge you to consider these during your work and to make Monmashia a more inclusive and youth-friendly place.
Thanks.
Hello. Councillor Brocklesby.
Well, the first thing I needed was a young person to come over here and sort out the technology for me. I put my hand up. Thank you, Eli. Thank you, Eli, for the, and Amanda. Really, really great presentation. I think we could all learn just from your presentation skills and the sparkiness of the PowerPoint presentation. Because as I often say to some of the Cabinet, we are often forced to die by PowerPoint rather than be enthused by it. And today, we were enthused. So, thank you very much. You make extremely important points. And I, myself, was very conscious how the two key areas for you, because they're so deeply entwined, was the cost of living crisis and health and wellbeing. And that's absolutely the case, I think, for all of us across the council, that we recognise that the cost of living crisis has had so many deep and negative impacts on every part of our population, including young people. And you were also very wise, I think, to encourage us to understand how diverse young people are within Monmashia. And that diversity both needs to be celebrated, as you seem to be doing, but also to be taken with a great deal of seriousness. And that it's not for us to go to a few people, but to recognise that one of our areas is our youth forum that has an outreach and a network among young people that we do not have. And you quite rightly suggested that we think in terms of how we can work with your project leads, but how we can work around issues that matter to you. And issues that matter to you, they matter to us. It is our absolute determination as a council that we shall be inclusive and diverse. Because both those, as we both know from, as we all know from yesterday, where we celebrated International Women's Day, that in order to have equality, and it's not just equality between men and women, it's between different ages, it's between different genders, it's between different classes, it's also from people who've got different experience of race and ethnic minority. If we're going to have that, we must start from a benchmark of fairness. Fairness and openness and a willingness to talk to everyone. And you made that point really strongly to us, and I thank you for that. And I know through the youth forum, we will continue to have this conversation. It's a really important one. We will take back the ideas that you've suggested with all seriousness through our Cabinet Member for Equalities, Catherine Fuchs, Catherine Fuchs, and our Cabinet Member for Engagement, councillor Sandals, who both of you met when we were doing the budget, where again, you put us in our place quite beautifully, and managed to realise some of the really important things that we need to think about in terms of resources. But I don't see this as a one-off event. I see this as a continuing conversation between different groups, particularly young people within our county. And thank you again.
Thank you, councillor Brocklesby. Councillor Jones, Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to echo what councillor Brocklesby has just said. You know, you have been to us before and you've spoken to us. And it's such an excellent and important way of communicating to the members all your concerns and your ideas as well, which we must take on board. And also highlighting the importance of corporate parenting, which affects all of the members. We are all corporate parents. So, it is vital that we take on board what you say and we listen. And we look forward to meeting you as often as possible through any source. It could be, you know, through engagement or it could be through the Corporate Parenting Panel led by councillor Tudor Thomas. It could be anywhere, but you can contact us, any one of us, at any time. But I'd just like to say thank you for coming. It was really informative. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. And I would just like to echo the comments from councillors Brocklesby and Jones. And we are really grateful to you for coming here today. Thank you so much. And I hope you'll be back in the future soon. Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. And I just wondered if you've got a spare hour that you could help us sort out our budget for the coming year? Because that was very impressive. I might have guessed at the first two areas, but I would not have guessed at vaping, being so high in young people's agenda. So, thanks very much for certainly making that much more clear to me. And I'll be very keen to find out more about what that particular set of issues are. It sounded like, from your point of view, it's a very substantial issue. So, thanks for that. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, the chair's just asked if I wanted to say anything. I could say so, so much. I guess, Jade, we must be 10 years into our Monmashia Youth Council now. And the input and the impact that your observations and your work have and the work of your predecessors also have actually helped to shape this organisation. So, please, continue. It's a joy to hear your input and the way that you present on behalf of your friends, your colleagues, and people that you know. But it's more than that. This organisation is interested in your voice. The 46 selected members who are sat in front of you are there to represent your views and to make our council better for you and for those that follow you. So, it's always good to have you in this chamber. I think it's delightful for us all to be reminded that your council comes here once a month. It's an important time for us. And this chamber was built for everybody in Monmashia of all ages. So, the more use you can make of it, the better it is for us and the quality of our decision-making. So, thanks to you, thanks to those that you represent. And yeah, I think there are some really insightful comments for us to reflect on as we build our programme of work over the months ahead. Thanks ever so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just thank you for your presentation? But also request that perhaps when you've done, you were talking about the fact that you've appointed leads on some of the areas you've identified. When you've begun to develop those, in particular, the health and wellbeing piece, that it would be really helpful to hear from you again, perhaps, in this way or in whichever way you feel is most appropriate? Because if we're going to feed those voices into the work that we do here or, you know, and outside of this chamber, then I think it's important to hear from you a little bit more regularly, perhaps. You know, I know there are sometimes opportunities, but there probably haven't been as many opportunities as we've had in the past, you know, in the past couple of years, to hear your voices and the voices of the young people that you've obviously surveyed in coming up with your priorities. So, thank you. That would be helpful. I don't know how we arrange that. But I leave that to Jade.
Thank you. And thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Garrick.
Yeah, I can hear it. I just want to say thank you for your excellent piece of work. It's been a pleasure working with you. It was a pleasure speaking to you and finding out your opinions on the budget earlier this year as well. And it's just wonderful to see what the future of our county is. And it is your future. When the CEO says that this chamber is for everybody, no matter what age it is, I'd really like you to bear in mind that this chamber is going to be yours at some point and that you should all be thinking about being in it at some point. So, I just wanted to say thank you and that I do look forward to you sitting on this side during a full council in future years. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garrick. All right. Well, again, thank you very much for coming to see us today. Councillor, we're now going to take the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of January. Councillor Howard, I remember you wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, members and senior officers. I'd just like to take this opportunity. Over the last weeks, we have had a dramatic issue which arose in Turkey and Syria. Over 50,000 people were killed in the space of so many hours. And I do believe we, as a council, just should pay that slightest moment of respect for Turkey and Syria and also for Ukraine as well. You imagine what it's like out there. We've got a day-to-day now and yesterday. People are living out there in that kind of weather. They're living there with nothing, with no shoes, no clothes, a lot of people. So, I'd just like this council to pay a slight moment of reflection and just think about people out in that world there. We're going to set a budget today. We're free and easy. We go and come. We all work together and we will deliver for our residents. A lot of people don't have that opportunity to do that, as we all know. So, I'd just like us to just bear that in mind and just pay that little respect today for them poor people on the other side of the world there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Howard. I will take us back to now the minutes of the meeting of the 19th of January. Is anybody willing to propose them as a true and accurate record? Great. Okay. I think it was councillor Bromfield. I'm going to take you as councillor second. Councillor Brown.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I just wondered in view of what councillor Howard has said, whether we should have a minute's silence. Thank you.
I think that would be appropriate, yes. Thank you. Please sit down. Councillor Powell.
I would just like to say on behalf of myself and Sue McConnell, we're both members on the South Wales Fire Authority. And several of the firefighters from there went out there and served and did a lot of good work out there. And they've come back now, most of them, but they were, I don't know whether any more have gone out, you know, Sue? I don't think any more have gone out since, have they now? But they did wonderful work over there. And I think we want to say thank you to them as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure all our councillors are more than willing to record our thanks for their service. Councillors, we'll now move to the minutes of the meeting of 2nd March, our extraordinary meeting last week. Councillor John.
Thanks, Chair. Artanina, everyone. There's an error on the minutes of the 2nd of March. Councillor Buckler is not listed as being present, and she was. Thank you.
No problem. Other than that, are we willing to accept these as an accurate record? Councillor Murphy, councillor McConnell. I'm now going to invite councillor Brocklesby to present the amended council tax resolution and revenue capital budget for 2024.
Councillors, as we all know, a week is a long time in politics and feels slightly longer than a week since we were last here. And much has happened that has allowed me to return to council in the knowledge that we have pulled together and we have pulled together in the best interests of our residents. And I would like to thank everybody, particularly the group leaders, for the time they were willing to put in and the work they were willing to do. And that includes our officers, who worked overtime to support us work the budget through. You will recall, given the vote last week, the responsibility fell to me to develop a set of budget proposals sufficient to win the support of the majority of council today. A responsibility that brought with it the recognition that the proposals would need to be realistic, costed, address the concerns expressed by council on the second, and remain rooted in the values and priorities of this council. The proposals required by councils will be tested against the major constraints facing us. The financial context that had been challenging since last year has required significant in-year budget savings and is predicted to remain testing well past 2024. In other words, the proposals I bring to you must not and will not increase the risks the council faces and has sought already to mitigate against. I thank again the group leaders who spoke to me largely in these terms. I am grateful for them to make it that time to discuss in this way and to share their thinking with me. I have incorporated as much as I can into the revised set of proposals. These are set out clearly and succinctly in Annex IV of the Revised Budget Report. All the proposed revisions can be delivered within the budgetary context of the council. And that was the biggest test. We are here, after all, to set the legal budget. We are here after all to set the legal budget. I'll just remind you what those revisions are. We will remove the 70k savings that have been proposed for an additional charge for the before-school clubs, thereby mitigating against any adverse impacts upon working parents who rely on the service. We will remove the 81,000 savings in relation to the Education Psychology Service and the 30,000 savings in Additional Learning Needs Administration in order to maintain the level of support for our most vulnerable pupils. We will reduce the reposed savings in relation to the Gwent Music Service subsidy of 39,000. This will allow schools to main projects and creative classroom activities, in effect its whole of classroom tuition in all musical disciplines across Monmasheer schools, and they will be free of charge to everyone. Pupils eligible for benefits for free school meals and refugees will also benefit. We will reduce neighbourhood service savings by 40,000 in order to maintain the services provided by the Community Improvement Team and to work with town and community councils. This will allow us to continue to develop the valuable grants maintenance, street cleansing and clearance services across the county and with a wide range of projects across Monmasheer. We also commit to undertake an operational review of littering and dog fowling. Up to 25,000 will be earmarked for implementing a range of proposals for tackling vergeside and town centre littering, along with enhanced monitoring and enforcement measures such as cameras at known litter and fly-tipping hotspots. I am cabinet member for resources, councillor Garrick. Both said last week that our Labour administration would ideally like to do more. The difficult choices we were facing did not blind us to the potential negative consequences. I recognise too a strong desire in other groups to also do more for our residents. But, and I cannot stress this more strongly, I believe, given the financial context, this is as far as we can reasonably go at this time. Councillor, I don't think we need to revisit the detail of last week's debate. It is fresh in our memory, very fresh in mine, by the way. Now is the time to move forward, set the budget, and allow the business of this council to carry on without disruption. I ask you to support the recommendations that I put to you today. I think they are the very best that can be offered. Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you, councillor Brocalsby. Councillor Taylor, I believe you want to bring forward an amendment.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, can I say that obviously we welcome the changes that the administration has tried to make. And we note that there is movement in the Educational Psychology Budget. But you will recall that one of our group's key concerns with the original budget proposals were the proposals to take one full-time equivalent post out of the Educational Psychology Service. Therefore, the amendment that I proposed on receiving the leaders' amendment papers was that we amend the budget to include a further 49,000 to retain the 0.6 post in the Educational Psychology team over and above the provisions in the leaders' addendum. The reasons for that, Councillor, are because you will note that the proposal is to take the 81,000 out of a grant that we received, the Additional Learning Needs Transformation Grant. And the purpose of that grant, as far as I understand it, is to assist the county in transforming its provision for the most vulnerable and the children and young people that we serve with additional learning needs into the new system, which we are required to support through the Additional Learning Needs Bill. The grant, sorry, the new provision sees us offer support, additional learning need support, to children aged between nought and 25. This is an immense step forward. It also sees us offer support which will assist the education workforce to be able to develop innovative solutions to meet the needs of some of our most vulnerable pupils. However, for me, this is the same grant that we had last year. And that grant is intended to be used to transform services. I see the Educational Psychology Service as absolutely core service to the provision of this council to meet the needs of our most vulnerable learners. It's also true to say that the grant is only secure currently for two years and also will be subject to perhaps in-year demands during this period. Surely, from my point of view, a responsible authority would be seeking to enhance its educational psychology provision, in particular to meet the new challenges of the Act and also to build capacity to support the strategic work of which educational psychology is undoubtedly a cornerstone. Work such as, and we heard our young people just talk to us just now, about the importance of building resilience around mental health and wellbeing. Work such as supporting that emotional wellbeing through the trauma-informed schools' strategic element is incredibly important. And I'm aware that one of our educational psychology team, our existing team, is trained to be able to support the workforce in implementing trauma-informed responses. It's also key to say that we have not been able to, because we haven't been required to, do a great deal with our post-16 offer. My thinking is that we will need that support to develop that offer if we are to meet the needs of those learners between 16 and 25 who may have extreme vulnerabilities and additional learning need support. Would it not be prudent to use this opportunity to expand our offer and recognise the difficulties also in recruiting educational psychologists? We heard quite clearly, and to be fair, the cabinet member also referenced this, that it is very difficult and introducing a grant-based element to recruitment may also lead us to further difficulty. Finally, I would just want to say to my colleagues here in the chamber today that we all appreciate the very difficult circumstances in which we find ourselves and we appreciate the moves made to accommodate. However, and I think that we've made reference to this today, the children and young people that are coming through our systems are indeed the future. And this is intended to be provision which will support our most vulnerable learners and also recognise the need for support, increased support, because we know that the pandemic took a significant toll on many of our children and young people. And allowing that wider work that the Educational Psychology Service do to support wellbeing in our schools and to support the workforce to find solutions prior, you know, for the general issues, which may not be acute, which may not require the statutory provision, but that require leadership. Our educational psychology teams also provide support for our education learning support advisers in schools. And that is a critical part of ensuring that our schools are safe, healthy places for all our children to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Do the second. Councillor Howard.
Can I second that amendment, please? Thank you.
Councillor Grokot.
Thank you, Chair. I wish to oppose this amendment. I think it is largely an irrelevance, but it's actually worse than that because I think it would constrict the work being done by the new Inclusion Service, which I note wasn't even mentioned in the proposer's speech there, yet will be at the very heart of the way in which we try to meet the needs of individual people, young people and young adults as we move forward with this service. To go from a position a week ago where we were looking at the possibility of losing a post to the proposal this afternoon, that not only is that post reinstated, but we go beyond that, would seem to me to be slightly bizarre at this point in the process. I would like to make one thing very clear right from the outset. And that is that the edpsych post that we feared might disappear at one point, we now have the agreement from the Welsh Government that that will be fully covered by ALN funding, grant funding, for the next two years. It will be advertised as a permanent post. And I think that in looking at the appointment of education psychologists to this authority, we have over recent times been very fortunate because of the quite inspirational leadership of our education psychology team and the direction in which they are taking the service. We have found more people applying for posts in Monmasheer than has been the case in neighbouring authorities. And so we are already, as an authority, better provided for in terms of the number of education psychologists per head of pupil than other neighbouring authorities. I think this amendment will tie the hands of those people who are trying to bring in a service that will meet the needs of contemporary education. I tried to speak last week in the debate about the vision that is being developed for the Inclusion Service. Education psychologists, the pupil referral service, a new head of post who will be looking after the needs of looked-after children, of bereaved children, of children who have very specific individual needs that in the past have been hard to meet under a system where each school got three visits from edpsych every year and they tested children, and low and behold, the idea was that the children would improve. The vision that we have within this county is one where we will be able to meet the needs of every individual child through a pupil-centred approach. And having spoken to both the senior officer for children and young people and the head of our new Inclusion Service this morning, they are both, I think, in agreement that anything that would limit the development of this new service, just as it is beginning to assert its excellence, would not be a good thing for the young people of Monmasheer. We have two years of this funding being guaranteed by the Welsh Government. I have given you my assurance that at that point, if it just reverted to being a budget pressure, I would ensure that the post remained a permanent post on the payroll because it is important and at the centre of our radical and, I hope, highly successful way of meeting individual need. I think this amendment, in that it refers to specifically preschoolers and young adults, would be very limiting. It would impose a post on a service just at a time when it is emerging. I would much rather we wait for the two years during which time this service can work out its own priorities in conjunction with elected members and obviously with the chief officer. And at the end of the two-year period, when the person is taken on to our own payroll, then we have a very clear view of where we're going to go forward in the future. This is an exciting and radical time. It will certainly enable those of us on the Labour side of the House to help, to put our manifesto to support and protect the needs of underprivileged and disadvantaged children into play. And it might well be that other parties in this House will also see a similar advantage in terms of what they sought election on. So I would ask members in the chamber to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grokot. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. Firstly, can I thank councillor Taylor for the amendment? I know very well that this amendment's been put forward with the very best interests of children in Monmasheer at its heart. In the Conservative group, we absolutely share councillor Taylor's concerns around children and young people's mental health, particularly coming out of the pandemic. And that's why it was one of the, it was the top demands that we made to the administration in our budget discussions. Educational psychologists, additional learning needs and inclusion were absolutely our top priority. We welcome the commitment that we weren't able to secure last week, which was that the Educational Psychology Service would be permanent, that those roles would be secure well into the future, not just funded by a grant for the next two years, but they would be included as a cost pressure in the medium-term financial plan thereafter. We certainly welcome moves to a more integrated Inclusion Service, and these were initiated by my colleague councillor Pavia. So we welcome the progress that's been made. And while I think the amendment is a modest request, we have taken a clear position on the budget, which I'll explain in a few minutes' time. And I feel we would have developed that position in bad faith if we were to support well-intentioned amendments today. So it's with regret that we'll abstain on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillors, we'll move to vote on the amendment. Councillors, that amendment falls, so we will move back to the report as presented by councillor Brocalsby. Councillor John.
Thank you very much. The budget presented to this council last week was not good enough. While the administration had made some modest improvements on the draft proposals, including ditching the disastrous 3000% increase on cafe pavement licences for high-street businesses, the unworkable change to the £2 breakfast club charging scheme, scrapping proposed cuts to social care, scrapping proposed price hikes for grassroots bus services, concessionary school transport and cuts to letter centre opening times. But we were still unhappy with these proposals because they penalise the most vulnerable in our county, including children, and fail to adequately protect frontline services. For the first time in nearly 30 years, a Monmasheer administration failed to win approval from council for its budget. I won't repeat the arguments of last week's debate, but I must say I was disappointed by the lack of humility from some Labour members following this defeat. I felt there was a sense of entitlement that we should have let you pass these proposals, even though they were damaging to the residents that you represent. 24 members voted against your budget, yet some of you chose to single out and vilify councillor Chandler in the local press in what I thought was the most disgraceful way. I don't know, but I hope that Labour members have apologised for those remarks. Really, I think you ought to be thanking councillor Chandler, independent and Conservative colleagues, for standing up for your residents in the way that Labour-backed ventures didn't. and raising genuine concerns about the impact this budget was going to have on the communities that you represent. So I thought that Labour members in this chamber let their residents down. I felt that Labour members came into this chamber like sheep filing into a slaughterhouse, blindly voting for proposals that were actively harmful to their residents, as if they're voting fodder. As backbenchers, you have a responsibility, even if you're in the governing party, you have a responsibility to hold your cabinet to account. You're supposed to be their conscience, their Jiminy Cricket. You're supposed to be on their shoulder, telling them when they've got things wrong. But instead, you were quite happy to vote through a budget with no firm provision for the educational psychology service or for children with additional learning needs, despite the fact we're emerging from a pandemic that has cast a terribly long shadow in mental health problems for vulnerable young children. You were happy to back an unworkable £2 Breakfast Club charge for families. So I hope you'll be telling your residents that you were quite happy for families to be burdened with fees of, say for a family with three children, over £1,000 a year. You were content to scrap the community improvement team and the vital work it does in the upkeep of our environment. I think you're good people with good intentions, but your silence over this budget empowered your cabinet to put forward damaging proposals. So I would urge Labour members in future not to be weak, to find your voice and to hold your cabinet to account. Last week, we heard from councillor Bond that this budget was the best it could possibly be, so I'm surprised we're not seeing amendments from her today reinstating the £2 Breakfast Club charge or removing funding for Gwent Music. Immediately after the meeting, I sat down with the leader, councillor Griffiths and councillor Garrick, and we had a constructive dialogue about some of the changes that we would like to see. I'd like to thank both the leader and councillor Taylor for the really constructive and at times quite intensive discussions, certainly extensive discussions that we've had about the budget and what we could do to find a consensus. We were keen to ensure that we could approve a budget today without moving into unprecedented territory. On this side, we've spent many years investing in this county, and we are not prepared to see it crash and burn under Labour. The responsible thing for us to do was to sit down with the administration and attempt to find common ground. I'd also like to thank the officers for the way in which they went beyond the call of duty in supporting us and finalising these budget proposals at short notice. And that did involve answering countless inquiries from me, sometimes late into the evening, so thank you for that. I'm pleased that we have a firm commitment to the educational psychology service and additional learning needs provision. Last week, the position looked uncertain. And while this provision will be grant-funded this year and next year, we have confirmation that these roles will be permanent and beyond the two-year grant funding will be a pressure in the medium-term financial plan. The administration has agreed to scrap the unworkable £2 Breakfast Club charge. I welcome the £40,000 to reinstate whole-class music tuition in all Mammothshire schools from Gwent Music, including for refugees and people from less well-off backgrounds. We've agreed to reinstate the community improvement team, which harnesses community volunteering capacity to improve our natural environment as well as working with local inmates. We welcome the additional £25,000 to explore methods of improving the way we tackle litter, including through additional investment in covert cameras in key litter and fly-tipping hotspots. I think these will act as a deterrent but also enforcement for those scumbags who damage our highways and hedge rows with unsightly litter. But this budget remains far from ideal. And while we welcome the additional investment in highways, this is nowhere near enough to fulfil your pledge to repair all potholes in Mammothshire within five years. 5.95% remains a significant council tax hike for our residents, and faced with the cost of living pressures, we would have much preferred to see a lower figure. But given that under your watch we've already seen the biggest and fastest ever fall in the council's reserves, and given the time pressures of a legal deadline, we felt capping council tax at 5% at this late stage was not a realistic demand. We stand by other concerns that we raised last week about the budget, which I won't repeat today, but I do hope that you will heed our calls to innovate. This isn't something that you just do at budget time to save a bit of money, you need to be doing it all year round, modernising services to deliver efficiencies. That's how previous Conservative administrations kept council tax low, I know much to your obvious annoyance. When Labour formed their administration in May, we promised to be a constructive and critical opposition. We set the highest possible standards for our residents, and we will continue to hold your feet to the fire to deliver on them. But we will be responsible. So today, we act in the county's interest, and we will abstain on this imperfect budget, but in the knowledge that we've tried to do our best to stretch it, to remove the most damaging elements to children and to frontline services. We take no pleasure in abstaining today, but we were not prepared to play high-stakes poker this afternoon with endless amendments and adjournments with our residents' money. So on that basis, we'll be abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair. Like many of the members in the chamber today, I'm a newbie. In the 10 months since the election, I have learned a great deal, both from the officers and the excellent training seminars and briefings they present us with, and from working on various committees and taking part in debates in the chamber, not to mention the reading, and yet more reading that is always required. Now, this is my first experience of budget setting, and whilst we are in exceptionally difficult circumstances with the ongoing worldwide effects of Covid pandemic and war in Europe and consequences on our economy, I am a realist and I believe there are unique pressures to be addressed in most years. So let's just accept where we are without politicising our situation. I didn't find in last week's debate that that was productive at all. Contrary to what the administration repeatedly inferred at our meeting last week when they failed to get their budget through, I don't believe there's anyone in this chamber who has not contributed in some way. We may not have overtly beaten the path to their open door, but we attended scrutiny meetings and challenged the administration, we met with officers, we discussed in our group meetings and we fed back through our group leaders to Cabinet. For at the end of the day, we all of us have to own this budget and communicate the decision to our electorate, and it's what we must do today. As I skimmed through an excess of 1,000 pages of document proposals and proceeded to scan in detail the areas to be impacted by budget savings, I thought only of two things. First of all, what impact there would be to residents in my community of Goitra Vare. And secondly, how our yet-to-be-adopted corporate plan, Taking Mammothshire Forward, would feed into and affect our budget decisions. As a retired teacher, I'm proud that one of our corporate objectives is that we are a learning place, where everybody has the opportunity to reach their potential. So when I looked at the proposals for young children and young people, I felt disheartened that there were savings proposed that would doubtless have adverse effects on our young people. In particular, I noted there was a budget proposal to reduce Gwent Music support by £100,000. Now, I'm really glad that in negotiations between leaders, £40,000 has been saved, but that still means a withdrawal of £60,000. And I do thank councillor Maryam Brocklesby for the conversations that she has had with Richard, our leader. Now, Gwent Music offers a wide variety of services in our schools, the whole-class projects that we refer to, music therapy and self-staff wellbeing sessions. This saving could potentially wipe out the ability of our schools to offer music to our children, or at least make it very difficult for the very tight budgets in schools. If your child does not experience music at a young age, they will not become musicians, they will not learn to play, they will never advance to proficiency, and they will limit their life chances. Members, I think all this tinkering around with the Gwent Music budget has given no thought to the impact on the lives of real people in the real-life situations in our community. There's no sense of the bigger picture of our goal of being a learning place where everyone can reach their potential. This salami slice approach to the budget won't just impact this year, it affects next year, then the next. Unless you take a sustainable approach to Gwent Music, this is exactly the sort of service that we are going to lose. Think perhaps about setting up a charitable foundation or trust that will sustain this wonderful service for years to come. This could potentially provide access to grants and funding that the council itself is unable to access. I'm very proud to say that my son benefited from the fantastic work that Gwent Music do, and my days are filled to a backdrop of guitar music flowing through my house. And my son is actually considering a music degree. But I do ask myself whether this would have happened without the wonderful institution of Gwent Music. I want every child in Mammothshire to have that chance. But I am going to conclude by actually applauding our chair, Laura Wright, who has chosen the Gwent charity music showcase, giving you a plug here, on the 27th of March for her charity event, at which I hope she raises a significant sum of money for Mind Mammothshire. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Oh, that's thrown me slightly. Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chair. I second everything that councillor Butler said. I was elected in, how long ago now? 14, 15 years ago. And soon after I was elected, I got interested in Gwent Music, along with our dear friend, councillor Peter Clark and his wife Jan, and also councillor Major from down south and his wife. My husband and I, we visited nearly every concert they put on. But they have a thing called the Gwent Music Friends, Friends of the Gwent Music, and you can put a subscription in, standing order payment each month, and they started it, if anybody wanted to start it, for £2 a month, which is hardly anything at all, and you can put what you like, obviously you can put more than that. But that's a way of each one of us. Because the councillors aren't able to afford to give the money they used to, this is another way in which we can support them. So if anybody is interested in supporting the Gwent Music, and if they happen to go to this next concert, there'll be the opportunity then to become a member of Friends of Gwent Music, and I would recommend this to everyone. There are two things in life for children that are very important. One is sport and the other is music. You'll find that children that have been involved in either sport or music, they have an extra interest, and they will follow that through as they get older. And they're far less likely to get into any trouble because they've got an interest, they've got a purpose in life. So I think it's very important that we do all we can to support Gwent Music. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Powell. Councillor Butler.
Thank you, Chair. Residents have contacted me to express their dismay at the proposed council tax rise of 5.95%. I can completely understand their concerns. The cost of living crisis is having a deep and real effect on the residents of Mammothshire. The Conservative-led administration always felt an obligation to keep council tax levels as low as possible. It is extremely disappointing that the first port of call for this minority-led Labour administration is to squeeze local residents until the pipsqueak. No council in England can raise their council tax more than 5%, yet this cabinet considers it acceptable to do so. Councillor Garrick is on record as saying that the previous Conservative administration had missed opportunities to raise council tax in the past. This shows a scant regard and understanding for the people who live and work in our extremely rural county. It costs more for people to live and work in rural communities and the countryside. They need our help not to be seen as a cash cow. On the 2nd of March at full council, yet again, the cabinet member for resources cited the low reserves held by Mammothshire Council as being a failure of the previous administration. This misleading narrative completely disregards the fact that Welsh Government gave Mammothshire far less per capita than neighbouring councils. It costs more to deliver services in such a rural area. We should get more, not less. This iniquity has meant that councils such as Blaina Gwent, Torvine and Caufilly managed to build up reserves at the end of March 2021 of 85.1 million, 39.5 million and 180.1 million respectively. In Wales, we rank bottom in the funding per capita table. If we received the average per person in Mammothshire, we would receive over £40 million a year from the Welsh Government. Are you, as a responsible administration, going to press for this to change? The fact that our reserves have increased in the way they have in recent years, again to the end of March 2021, to give fair comparison, to 32.6 million, is due to the exceptional council officers and the Conservative-led administration's effort. We owe our residents a duty of care, and this budget has serious flaws in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add a little bit of clarity to what I was aware that councillor Butler was going to say. At least I would if I hadn't just lost what I was going to say. We, as the previous administration, always came in surplus. That surplus was always put into EAMARC or the General Reserve. But at the last meeting, we heard many references that the current situation on low reserves was the fault of the previous administration. As councillor Butler has just said, we are still at number 22, woefully short of even the Welsh average, and it will take many years at the top of the settlements, as we've had in the last two years, to catch up. So I would urge the administration to look at Cardiff and not at the previous administration.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor McConnell.
Thank you, Chair. I think if there's one thing that we're clearly completely unified on, it's the joy of music and young people learning. It's been quite a musical theme. Partway through councillor John's contribution this afternoon, I was suddenly reminded of the bagpipe allegory that we were treated to last week, but I'm not going to pursue that because I think it is time that we got this budget through. A lot of work, a lot of consultation, a lot of discussion, a lot of to-ing and fro-ing has come and gone over the time that it's taken to get to this place this afternoon. And I think we should press on, let our officers and the council get on with doing our job and let us get on with progressing now. I just want to pick up on one other thing that councillor John remarked, that the backbenchers filed in here like sheep, obviously, just taking orders. I'd like to reassure him, as the Chair of the Labour Group, that there is more than robust debate within the Labour Group on a very regular basis. It's aging me by the minute, so we don't do it in this room, but nonetheless, it is robust and extremely exhausting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McConnell. Just give me a moment because Teams is playing up a bit. Councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I think inadvertently I've put my name down twice, so if you ignore the second one, thank you. I just wanted to say how pleased I was that the whole-class tuition was going to be restored within the Gwent Music side because it was something that I actually raised at the place scrutiny committee, because one of my residents contacted me and said how valuable the Gwent Music was going in to give this whole-class tuition in Shire Newton Primary School. It then ended up with a pupil as a result of this introduction now in the secondary school, having reached grade nine in that particular instrument, and the resident also And the resident also explained to me how important having this instrument was, particularly during the Covid period, you know. So there was that active interest to actually pursue. So I'm very pleased to see that, as a result of the opposition negotiations, that has been now included within the budget. I still have concerns about the school bus transport thing. I won't reiterate what was said on the 2nd of March, because I'm sure you can listen to that again if you wish to. I would like some reassurance from the Cabinet Member, because he did mention the learner-traveller measure thing in terms of an assessment of safe routes. I would like a reassurance that this will fully take account of the children and young persons' view with regard to how safe a route is. I know this is included within the form, but I think it's a question of properly listening to this and acting on it. And with regard to the road safety assessment, I am concerned that, for example, in one instance in my ward, the road safety officer came along for 45 minutes during a time period when one of the secondary schools that serves the area was closed. So I don't think that that was a particularly good thing. And obviously, a road safety officer coming along for 45 minutes is not the same as local residents who experience the dangers of a particular road every single day. So I would hope that on the safety side, we could properly follow the learner-traveller measure means that are listed and take fully account of the youth voice and their impact and their feelings about safety. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Grokha, would you be willing to address councillor Brown's questions outside the meeting, just for the sake of progress? Thank you. Councillor Mayby.
Chair, could I raise a point of order? We've got 35 minutes or two speeches to go. Could we move to a vote, please?
No. Councillor Mayby.
As you can see, Labour members are not sheep. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify a couple of the points that were made earlier, just to give a little bit more detail about community improvement teams and on highways. I'll try not to be too long-winded about it. And I do appreciate the discussions we've had with members of the opposition over the last week. I think we've managed to move on with our discussion in a lot of ways on some very difficult issues. Concerns were raised about the loss of the Community Improvement Team, which employs prisoners to work with staff on various street cleaning and improvement tasks. And that service employs the prisoners to do non-statutory work, and we realise that this is incredibly highly valued by communities. It was originally funded through grants such as Keep Wales Tidy, and it expanded at one point to being two teams, two vehicles, and with a couple of prisoners in each team. However, the number of prisoners taken up has dropped off over time. Other placements pay more, amongst other things. And one of our team leaders has already retired and that team been disbanded. We have one team still going, and it takes very particular skills to do this kind of work and to manage these particular individuals. So we value the work that they do enormously, but it may not be something that's viable in the long term. The team leader who remains is aiming to retire later in this financial year. So just to clarify what has come out of the discussions, we've noticed that over this period of time, town and community councils have been increasingly involved in street scene work. And we feel it makes sense to build on that and review how it's done across the county and make sure we have truly effective service level agreements with all the relevant councils and town teams, wherever that's appropriate. So we've revised the budgets to take this into account, to keep the Community Improvement Team going as long as we can, but to refresh how we're doing this and to work together on that. So I just wanted to clarify that. On highways, another very difficult area, litter and highways, well, you know, this matters to everybody. I understand that questions have been raised about the need for additional investment in highways repairs and maintenance, and that this has been a very longstanding concern of some councillors who've been elected members for an awful lot longer than me. I agree very much, we need more funds for highways, and it's an issue we have to face up to. It's not a can that can be kicked down the road forever to be picked up later. The problems can only get worse, and they are further exacerbated by flooding and extreme weather events, which we are seeing more of with climate change. Last week, I did remind council that when we took over the administration, we inherited a situation where the very broad estimate for bringing all the county's roads up to really good condition was about £80 million. It may be higher than that, it's probably a lot higher than that now. So you see, the problem has not suddenly appeared during the past 10 months. But what has happened in the past 10 months is galloping inflation and a severe crisis in public funding. So yes, we have not solved this long-term problem with this budget. And no, we could not solve it by even the most desperately awful and painful hikes in council tax. The maths doesn't stack up. We have too much road to fix. I'm told it's about 1,600 kilometres of carriageway, not including the trunk roads and private roads, plus 180 bridges. And we have too few households to pay for it. So while highways have done over the last 18 months is to survey the road network and assess it for the forward programme, using an evidence-based rating system so that work can be properly prioritised, but that does not deal with the capital shortfall to get the works done. I think it's too complex and tactical an issue to deal with effectively in this kind of debate. But what I would like to propose is that we do so more in a fuller discussion in the near future, in a collaborative way, one that is practical rather than theatrical. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mayby. Councillor Riley.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, there was a competitive and humorous start to the meeting, and I found myself thinking of alternative jokeiness, harps and choirs using words like mellifluous and harmonious. Then I thought, this is silly, why are we here? I had laughed, and I won't say which bits I'd laughed at, but we should book a slot at the Borough Theatre and maybe councillors do comedy. But we're here to discuss a balanced budget, one that meets the needs of our very diverse wards. They're diverse due to recognising enormous inequalities across our county. All of those communities have needs, and between us, we needed to come together to find an acceptable solution. Jibes about vanity videos may be funny but not fair, when I think we are all aware that that money had already been promised by the previous administration, and only the people have now changed. The school breakfast club funding, making the suggestion that Labour is elitist and attacking vulnerable children, should have been the biggest gag, only it wasn't funny. I've looked at the figures across the county and spoken to schools and parents in our ward. All children arriving within a specified time get the free breakfast, if they want it. To be blunt, it's cheap, non-nutritious food, but will stave off hunger to allow for learning. Should we draw something from the figures in the less deprived wards? In some wards, the take-up of breakfast is lower than the take-up of care. In the more deprived wards, it's the opposite. That's something to think about. A little more money would maybe have allowed for wholemeal bread and cheese as an alternative to white bread and jam. Only working parents pay for the care aspect, if they don't meet the criteria previously used for free school meals. Most of the parents I've spoken to seem to consider either one pound or two pound chip per child to be very good value for the stress-free ability to get to work, even if they would rather not pay it. If this budget is not agreed today, then Welsh Government will become involved. This in itself will have a significant cost, mostly, I assume, to Welsh Government. It's an unnecessary cost. Welsh Government are acknowledged to have provided the reserves that we are dipping into to keep the council tax from being raised even higher. Anyone who thinks that the previous administration ran things perfectly need to take a drive east and observe the litter and tumbleweed in the car park of the economic desolation that is Pity Leisure Park to see that's not so. Let's get this budget agreed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Riley.
Yeah, just very quickly, council, it's never my goal to make an input here, but councillor Riley, just on one of your points, I think it's probably fair to say to council that the food we serve in our schools is neither cheap, and it certainly is nutritious.
Councillor Chandler.
Thank you, Chair. When my children were much younger, instead of accepting responsibility for their behaviour, they'd seek to blame others. It's your fault, so-and-so made me do it. Now they're older, they're not perfect, but they are mature enough to accept responsibility for the choices they make. I have to say, I think it's very disappointing that the Labour administration have yet to reach that level of maturity. Since the original budget proposals were first published for consultation, I've engaged heavily in the process. I read all 1,300 pages of the proposals, attended two briefings given by councillor Garrick, examined the proposals in detail at place scrutiny and at performance and overview scrutiny, and asked Cabinet members and officers numerous questions to get clarification on the numbers and on the impact of those savings on residents. And I've made it clear to the administration my concerns on how the most vulnerable in our county are bearing the brunt of their proposed cuts. I've tried to act as a critical friend to this administration, supporting it in areas where it is doing good things, and pointing out where I feel it could do better, but without trying to score any political points. And that's why it was so disappointing, that before we'd even sat down in the chamber last week, we were reading councillor Garrick's social media posts criticising me and other opposition councillors for not engaging with the budget process. But that was nothing compared...
Chair, could I raise a point of order? I don't believe that I have ever criticised this councillor.
Councillor, finish.
So, as I was saying, councillor Garrick, before even we sat down last week, was tweeting about how opposition councillors had not engaged in the budget process. But that was nothing to what the Labour administration said after this chamber rejected the budget proposals last week. And it seems that the Cabinet were not even completely honest with their own group members about what had happened. I was attacked personally by Cabinet members and by other Labour councillors, repeating the slur that I hadn't engaged in the process, with some comments alleging that I hadn't even read the papers. And the comments were also saying that they seemed to think that, as I am not a Conservative, then they have the right to my vote. Well, let me make this perfectly clear to the Labour Group: you only get my vote when you deserve it. And in my view, while there have been some welcome concessions over this last week, this proposed budget does not deserve support, and I will give you three reasons. The administration's own budget papers, the original 1,300-page version, not the brief summary we've given last week and this week, they contained detailed impact assessments on each of the proposed savings. So I'm relying on what the council officers and Cabinet have been putting forward in terms of their own impact assessments. Many of those impact assessments were very critical and were rated red. And yet, the administration in many of those cases has not set out clear mitigation measures that would reduce the harm caused. One example that particularly concerns me is in adult social care. The assessment stated that the impact on the elderly and vulnerable of the cuts that it is proposing would be severe, increased waiting times, reduced services and so on. Now councillor Garrick proposed after the consultation to take a million pounds from reserves, as it was recognised that the savings being projected could not be achieved in year one. But that million pounds added reserves is only to delay the savings. The cuts are still going ahead, albeit at a slower rate, and the old, the sick, the disabled, the poor, they will still suffer the effects of those cuts. Secondly, in this chamber in January, the chamber made it very clear to the administration that the continued closure of the Tudor Street Centre post-Covid was wrong, and that it should reopen pending a review of service provision and the development, if necessary, of new approaches. The administration has refused to do this. Another vulnerable group ignored and left to suffer. And third, this budget reduces our reserves to a worryingly low level. Councillor Garrick has said that it is important that we replenish our reserves, but she has not set out in the medium-term financial plan how that will happen. Now, this administration did not want us to debate the budget last week. It wanted to engage in brinkmanship by presenting the budget at the last possible moment so that changes could not be made and opposition councillors would be unable to reject the budget without putting the council in a very difficult position. But we in the opposition insisted on an earlier debate so we could have a meaningful dialogue and hopefully reach a broader consensus. But here we are, no consensus, a grudging abstention from the Conservative group to let this go through. But have we achieved much? A majority administration would consult and have an open door for the opposition to share their views. But a minority administration should be doing something differently. It should be creating structures and processes to negotiate agreement across the chamber so that it can get its policies through, rather than engaging a game of chicken to see who blinks first. But this one acts differently. This administration is sticking their collective heads in the sand and blaming others for the choices they make. I say it's time for them to grow up, get some maturity, stop playing games and work with others for the benefit of the people of Monmouthshire.
Thank you, councillor Chandler. Councillor Keir.
Thank you very much, Chair. Can I start by saying firstly how disappointed I was at the end of last week's meeting to read councillor Bond's comment with regards to our nearly three hours of discussion as being a shameful waste of time? I was also say, I was surprised to read councillor Callard's tweet referring to the process last week as games. But more so, I was shocked to read Cabinet member Sandals and other Labour members' personal attack on councillor Chandler about his principled reasons, as he's just highlighted, for voting against the budget as presented last week. In my view, and I'm entitled to them, all these are examples that denigrate the budget process and the remarkable hard work of officers, council members ploughing through over 1,000 pages of documents, and dare I say, the difficult work undertaken by the Labour Cabinet members. All of those who elected us, in my opinion, expect better, frankly. In addition, I would like to associate myself with the comments made last week by councillor Howarth and councillor Neer on the work of the volunteers in Monmouthshire. Honoursing the energy of such volunteers, treating them like long-lost friends is my mantra, can only be good for where we live and our residents. I'm sure in the chamber there, there are no doubt great examples of volunteers, and indeed, I highlight my fellow ward member councillor Howells, who began his work as the archetypal volunteer in Asc, who took his enthusiasm on to our town council, then as mayor, and now as a county councillor. If he hadn't have been encouraged, we wouldn't have that position. Like councillor Chandler and 23 others, I had concerns about the budget as presented, and still do now to a lesser extent. But I am pleased to see the changes now proposed, and to that end specifically the changes to the neighbourhood services and community improvement team. Just referring to my comments now on volunteers, my hometown of Asc is renowned for outstanding individuals on volunteering and what they bring to the beautiful place of Asc. Whether it's the examples of first responders, the Catholic Church food kitchen that cooks meals for over 40 vulnerable residents twice a week, or my colleagues in Asc in Bloom. On the latter, for over 40 years, we've worked with MCC to help earn the name the Town of Flowers, by way of Open Garden Weekend, which brings in over 2,000 visitors each year on one week alone, boosting local businesses and now raised over £300,000 for good causes. Or via the Wales and Britain in Bloomin boards, or indeed, such volunteers still ask become world champions in 2018. So my Bloom colleagues were horrified to learn of the potential... Sorry, they were horrified to learn that the required additional road sweeps, weed removal or hedge cutting ahead of judging, was all going to fall away under the proposals last week. So on behalf of my residents, I'd like to thank all of those who've been burning the midnight oil to agree changes to be foot-forward for discussions and voting today. foot forward for discussions and voting today. So whilst I have still concerns, as I've said and mentioned by my colleagues in our group, for me, getting to this position today has shown it wasn't a shameful waste of time or a game. It was proper scrutiny, negotiation, and county councillors standing up for those that we represent. We have been doing our job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Keir. Councillor Davies.
We can't hear you councillor, you're on mute.
Forgive me, Chair, is that better? I was about to say it's a pleasure to follow my good friend councillor Keir, who made an incredibly thoughtful contribution and of course speaks with considerable authority given his many years working with the wonderful volunteers of Askin Bloom. And I also put on record how struck I was by that powerful intervention by councillor Chandler as well. I was about to begin proceedings by saying how wonderful it was to see a more civilized and cordial discussion this afternoon, following the at times ill-tempered and occasionally edifying spectacle of last week's budget debate. Perhaps that was somewhat premature. May I associate myself with what councillor Keir had to say. I thought it was most regrettable that some members chose to conflate legitimate scrutiny for for party politics and chose to casually dismiss what were deeply held concerns by many of our local residents about how this draft budget disproportionately penalized families, particularly children and young people, and some of the most vulnerable residents. But in welcoming a more civilized and courteous politics this afternoon, may I perhaps lead by example and practice what I preach and commend the council leader and her deputy leader in particular for their generosity of spirit in reaching across the aisle in the days since last week's budget debate, and for showing a willingness to at least engage constructively with the opposition benches. In doing so, I think they've demonstrated once again that no one political party in this chamber has a monopoly on good ideas. And when we choose to set our political animosities aside, we are all as councillors driven by that same sense of public duty and that burning desire to wish to improve the lives of our local residents and communities right across Monmouthshire. There's a Welsh language proverb, which I'm sure the cabinet member for social care is familiar with, nid da llwglw. For the benefit of other members, roughly translates as it's not good if it can be done better. And indeed, contrary to some of the protestations from members opposite last week, the concessions secured by the opposition demonstrate, I think, that things could be done better and that there was room, and indeed there remains room still, in my view, to improve this budget. I warned during last year's council elections that Labour would soon strike Monmouthshire residents with a council tax bombshell. And I was, of course, disappointed but not entirely surprised by the decision to clobber residents with a 5.9% council tax increase. Only for that increase, of course, to be compounded by a slew of other stealth taxes, chairman, including hikes to the discretionary charge for breakfast clubs. So I'm relieved and indeed encouraged that the administration has at least reversed course on its proposals to charge for breakfast clubs, reflecting, I think, the anxiety of many families across Monmouthshire about the impact upon working families across this county who rely on what is a cherished service. This change will help, of course, though not alleviate altogether what are going to be considerable financial pressures on many households across Monmouthshire in the coming 12 months. Not to dwell too much on our outstanding differences, let me say how pleased I am to see the authority move confidently forwards with its proposals for a Welsh language primary school in Monmouth. And may I also add, Chair, that in promoting the Welsh language, this administration can be assured of my continued support. I'm also pleased to see that proposals to gut our neighbourhood service team, which councillor Keir alluded to, have now been reconsidered, following representations by myself and others at a recent meeting of the Place Committee scrutiny meeting. I'm particularly pleased that budget's been identified to maintain some base level service provision and to support a dedicated community improvement team who have historically worked so effectively, of course, with many of our towns and community councils. But in welcoming these events, might I make a recommendation to the administration to look again at how we perhaps creatively imagine and redesign this service for the betterment of our communities. Might we, for example, consider a model whereby MCC invites expressions of interest or nominations for worthy community projects, be that from community councils or indeed from voluntary groups, with a offer from MCC to provide match funding, where our financial muscle perhaps can make all the difference in obtaining that tangible community asset that could make a real difference to the local community. Now, this needn't be necessarily a commitment to match fund pound for pound either. Community councils, voluntary groups, even the private sector for that matter, could offer to donate a certain amount of volunteering hours, for example, with a commensurate match funding of hours or funding from this administration. Such an approach, I think, would harness, I think, and really turbocharge volunteerism across this county, leveraging, as has previously been commented in this chamber, the immense civic capital that we have here across Monmouthshire. And perhaps more importantly of all, it would empower community councils, those businesses, those civic-minded businesses who wish to be involved, those voluntary groups, to work more closely with the administration and this authority in the co-designing of specific programs or activities which could make a real difference to our local communities. Turning finally, Chair, if I may, I wish to address another issue that animates councillors and residents alike, which is the scourge of littering, which has been alluded to already by councillor Maybeam. I was pleased to see that budget was found, following again representations made by myself and the group leader, to support the operational review of littering across this county and, as I'm led to believe from the representations made this afternoon, for the potential earmarking of that budget for both enhanced monitoring and enforcement, including the provision of cameras at no litter and fly tipping hotspots, which I know will be widely welcomed by residents across Monmouthshire. But as welcome as that budget is, of course, that is only part of the jigsaw. And might I urge this administration to more aggressively pursue fixed penalty notices against litter louts across Monmouthshire in the next 12 months or so, having failed, as I understand it, to have issued a single fixed penalty notice for littering in the preceding 12 months, for which all members, I'm sure, myself included, would wholeheartedly raise a three or cheers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Councillor Watts.
Yes, Chair, I find it quite incredible, really, that we're getting a lecture on from the Conservative administration that in some way we failed to progress or trying to implement proposals to improve litter or dog fowling or fly tipping. I mean, under the last, I think it's two administrations, I think the Tory administration successfully prosecuted two people. And one of those people, I think, actually had their own bank statements with their address in the black bags after fly tipping. So I'm not really in a position where I'm prepared to accept kind of lessons from the Conservative members, really, on wastepaper, sorry, litter picking or really dog fowling, especially when dog fowling, they were the administration that got rid of the dog wardens. I think it was probably two, maybe, yeah, it was probably two, if I remember rightly, yeah, two terms ago. And really, nothing's happened since. We've had to rely then on tank councils, either to pick the litter up or basically to put in extra dog bins. They've been effectively funded. You could argue potentially that's double taxation. The issue about volunteers is a noble idea. There's nothing wrong with that. But the reality is for working class people, particularly in the wards that I represent, Sue represents, and, you know, across the south, those semi-urban areas, those people are running two or three jobs. They haven't got time to volunteer. So I really need, I really want you to think about it in a more subjective kind of way. Those people, you know, and you're welcome, putting aside politics. If you don't believe me, Ben, you know, in all honesty, you're welcome to come down with Sue and I, have a wander around the ward and see for yourself how people live and the time that they have looking after their families, as I say, running one or two jobs. It's just not realistic to think that in some way people are semi-retired, volunteering their lives away. That sounds great, but it just doesn't happen. People just haven't got the time. The other thing I say, I'm sorry, is the pronunciation of our towns, is what I noticed before one of the Conservative members referred to Caldecot, and I'm from Caldecot, it's Codecot. I know Rogget is Rogget, but I'm sure, this is a question for the chief, is it Monmouthshire is Monmouthshire? I just, sorry if you think that's being a little bit...
Councillor Watts, this isn't relevant. Move it on.
Well, I do think it is, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Paviot, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I first associate myself with the comments made by councillor John with regard to the concessions that were made by the administration? I know this would have been a difficult thing to do, both politically but also in terms of operationally over the last week, working probably very long days with council officers to find that additional money and rework the budget. So I certainly welcome that and the work that's been done. I do think the concessions made, particularly around the childcare element of breakfast club provision and the park restoration of Gwent music, will have a significant impact on hard-pressed families who do find it really challenging at the moment to make ends meet, but also to provide opportunities for their children. So, you know, I'm quite surprised hearing from some Labour members who think the additional charge should be kept in, you know, it's an element worth fighting for rather than increasing council tax, you know. I'm surprised about that. But also, I know from my previous role, the impact on the COVID-19 has had on our children, young people, has been disproportionate, not just in terms of lost learning and peer engagement, particularly in terms of mental health and wellbeing. I keep saying it within this council, but that the full impact and the most acute aspects of the pandemic won't be realized for many years to come. It will take many years to unwind. Anxiety, depression, psychological and behavioural issues, higher rates of absenteeism from schools, complex referrals to CAMHS, they have and continue to come to the fore. We need to be building capacity in this area with health and third sector partners. So that's why I'm too pleased about the concession around educational psychologist funding. And we should also not forget, actually, the therapeutic impact of music. And I was quite struck by councillor Butler's comments and her experience. I remember Lord Winston, Robert Winston, presented a BBC radio series about 10 years ago on music and the brain. I'm sure it's still be found on BBC Sounds. But I certainly agree with councillor Butler's call for the administration to try and put the Gwent music provision funding on a sustainable and more long-term footing. However, the budget still provides me with some troubling issues. You know, I appreciate the administration is still due to pass its corporate plan. I'm sure it will be passed next time it's brought to council. However, looking at some of the rhetoric and proposed ambition within the plan, I just don't see it matching up with the budget proposals. There is a juxtaposition with what is being said in the corporate plan and what is being planned for. And for me, you know, one of the strap lines within the corporate plan of a plan of hope and enterprise is certainly don't think is a budget of hope and enterprise. In terms of education, I'm worried about the funding cuts. Yes, our schools did benefit significantly from Welsh Government funding, and I was the first to welcome that funding when it came. However, a significant amount of that funding has now been spent by our schools, and we're starting to see a number of our schools falling into deficit again. I think we'll see nine by the end of this financial year, and undoubtedly more will follow. And that will mean not only reduced spending per pupil head, but that will probably, more than probably, lead to redundancies. And that's before we factor in any additional teachers' pay increases. Given what is set out in the corporate plan about addressing the COVID impact on our children and young people, the approach in this budget seems very strange indeed. Social care, like education, is a third of this council's budget and is getting bigger. And while, of course, welcome the additional £1 million the administration has injected in from reserves to mitigate some of the impact next year, the long-term financial trajectory is extremely worrying and the risks that this council will have to carry are significant. And I think councillor Chandler expressed that very well. The bands on the social care department to realize those savings and produce service redesign are substantial. And my colleagues and I on the performance and overview will continue to monitor how it delivers that over the next financial year. It's absolutely critical, I think, that we are firm with partners where they have lead responsibility. And I'm thinking here in terms of continuing care for children and young people and continuing healthcare for adults with complex needs. We should not be left to carry the financial cost because the NHS abdicate themselves of their responsibilities. These are large, large sums of money which shouldn't be falling on the shoulders of council taxpayers to carry. In terms of children's services, and I do want to take issue with some of the comments that were made at the last meeting about the market being fundamentally broken and run by private equity and hedge fund companies. Yes, the market for placements isn't working very well. I openly admit that working in the sector. But we would like, you know, I would like to think that, you know, services are not being run by fat cats lounging on beaches of Nassau and the Cayman Islands. You know, there's a lot of very good small providers, small and medium-sized family-run businesses in this region across Wales, delivering very, very good services. However, as I said, be infirm with partners. Let's not pretend that Welsh Government intervention in terms of how it's delivering its elimination of profit agenda is not having a profound impact on the children's care market. The availability of placements is reducing, as many small and medium-sized providers deliberately exit the market. Providers that remain are operating differently, profoundly differently to previously. And the commissioning environment has changed significantly. Fewer placements means increased financial pressure on this council, and it means increased risk of operating without registration. And that has extensive regulatory and legal ramifications. Leaders have the duty in this administration to point that out to Welsh Government in no uncertain terms. And while the overall principle is right, excess profiteering on the backs of some of our most vulnerable children is not acceptable, the current approach to implementation is immensely damaging. I could go on, Madam Chair, in relation to the juxtaposition and rhetoric between improving footfall and attracting tourists to our town centres and the reality of increased car parking charges of 15%. I recall my colleague councillor Watts was very animated, more animated than he usually is in 2019, when the previous administration increased council tax, increased car parking charges by 10%. Given the administration has committed itself to a review during this coming financial year, it does seem a bit short-sighted to make such an intervention now. So to conclude, Madam Chair, I welcome the concessions made, but this budget still troubles me greatly. And I thought councillor Chandler's intervention was accurate and appropriate. While I'm not in a position to support it, I have to recognize the movement that has been made by the administration, coupled with additional investment in the social care. So I will be abstaining when we come to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Paviot. Councillor Garrett.
Thank you. Well, we welcome the opposition's decision to abstain today. To hear the comments that some of the members have made about the difficult decisions made by cabinet and officers about trying to achieve a balanced budget. You'd be surprised that the political party they belong to was responsible for the period of austerity we've lived through since 2010. The imposition of £9,000 a year to university tuition fees has caused great harm to people and debt for our young people weighing into their working life. The massive cuts to Cameron Osborne years, the disastrous Truss era of last year. Boris Johnson has pocketed half of the deficit, £5 million, since he was ousted by his own party, while our residents struggle. To listen to Conservative members, you forget this is a party that took away the £20 weekly uplift of universal credit affecting many residents in Monmouthshire. So we're talking about, you're talking about issues with finances.
We are run by the Welsh Government chairman and not by Theresa May or Theresa, whatever her name is.
Councillor, I was giving councillor Garrett the benefit of the doubt in the hope that he was about to come to the point. Councillor Garrett, are you coming to the point?
I'm coming to my point, yes, thank you. Okay. The government could have reduced the need for us to be here today by helping us, helping councils across the country. They bailed out Bourb with £6 billion. The Westminster government is demonizing assignment seekers at the moment. We've had 13 years. So, and just finally to conclude, we've been in for 10 months, they've had 17 years in Monmouthshire. Let's give us the chance to get this budget through. The cabinet is listening. Let's pass the budget. Thank you. The Cabinet is listening, let's pass the budget, thank you.
All right, shh. councillor Lucas.
Good afternoon all. I should start really by saying I feel slightly nervous about speaking so loud and passionate about certain things. I've heard councillor Watts this afternoon forbade someone for the way in which they speak. I find that offensive for one, more than one reason. Firstly, as I am a severe dyslexic, I find this particularly nervous, yet I do not pronounce everything in the manner that some people might. In my own working life, I have been forbated in writing on reports for the way which I speak. I ask, does that mean because I'm well-spoken that someone else is unwell-spoken? What does that mean? So councillor Watts, I'm sorry, I take offence by that statement. Because I don't have an accent and someone else does, does that make it any better or worse for what they are saying? So to go back to the reason why I put my hand in the pot, as they used to say to speak today, potholes. Now, whilst I accept that councillor Mayby commented on the state of our highways budget, it is still the most important thing for the majority of people, not the most perhaps, but one of the things that is forbated about frequently, if not in every conversation I have with residents. Whether you walk, cycle, drive, catch a bus, any of the means you can think of to transport yourself across our county, that our states of our roads are in a terrible state. To say, and I hate to bring this point back to my previous speaker, that it's all from our government, as in Westminster, we are controlled, are we not, by the Welsh Government? Therefore, we have, as councillor Mayby said, £80 million, I believe, short on our, for what we'd like to achieve on our highways. Yet, we have to put up with that because we don't get our fair crack from the Welsh Government. Moving along from that, the residents constantly tell me that the state of our roads, the potholes, are the reason why they even feel on occasions not reason to vote, because no one listens to them. The potholes aren't mended properly. Well, I walk, I cycle, I used to ride horses professionally, for in someone's people's eyes, not in everyone's, I have to say, I fell off quite a few times. And I am a professional driving examiner, that is my living, that's what I do for my profession. I also hold large good vehicle licences as well. For my health and wellbeing, I actually cycle a great deal, and have been known with pleasure to say I've cycled to one of these meetings. I wanted to today because I had the chance of time, however, snow sort of thought logically, perhaps not the wisest thing today. That aside, I still do cycle a great deal. And I have actually taken advantage of the cycle to work scheme and bought myself an electric bike, which if for those of you who have or have not ridden one, I strongly recommend you do, it's brilliant. It takes the ache out of the dread of the hills. I've even had Richard John on the electric bike falling off going, oh my God, as he zooms up the hill. It was a sight to behold. He probably wishes I hadn't said that now. What's this got to do with the budget? Well, it has. Well, it has, because we are all here for one reason and one reason alone, and that is to serve our residents. And without shadow of doubt, every one of us have got here today by a means of transport. Now, whether you are active travel, which I know from my fellow Monmouth Town councillors, particularly Emma, who she and I are absolutely passionate about the active travel bridge across Wye. It is without shadow of doubt one of the big things that affect everybody, doesn't matter how you move around the country, all our county, you use roads. The state of our roads are a big issue, and we need to be addressing them as well. So with that all in mind, I really wish that everybody would hear and think every time they hit a pothole and someone hits it in their car, and with the crisis of cost of living as we are at the moment, and they puncture their tyre, do damage to their car, it costs money, money which lots of people don't have. So, yes, it is a cost, yes, we are responsible for it, but yes, please, everybody, do wake up, whether we would like to move the world forward in many ways, we do have other responsibilities as well. And safety is huge. And I can bring that back down to where I live, to there being two cycling accidents on Star Hill and the state of our roads there. And those cycling accidents were very dangerous, and one of them had to be airlifted away. And that is purely down to the state of that road. And on that note, I think I've embarrassed myself sufficiently, so thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lucas, not as much as you embarrassed councillor John, I don't think. councillor Howard.
Sorry Chair, I was really getting into that then. Chairman, and it was you I was getting into, Richard, I was just picturing it. First of all, may I just thank councillor John, councillor Taylor, councillor Chandler and the Cabinet for bringing something for us today. I must applaud councillor John and councillor Taylor for actually putting the meeting in for last week, because if we hadn't had the meeting last week, we would be in a real pickle today. So we have got some concessions, not them all, but we have some concessions. So I thank Mary Ann and the Cabinet for them concessions. But that's still not enough for me. I'm sorry, but there's lots been said today, and I think that the last speaker has made it very clear to this council that we can't continue as we are. And I urge the Cabinet member for highways, we seek an urgent meeting as a council to sit down and thrash out how we're going to take our structure forward within the county. And I think it needs to be addressed urgently. We haven't done it within the budget. I spent some time this week discussing issues with highways officers for the budget, and I do welcome the litter side of it, that's a drop in the ocean, that is. We were informed about vehicle recognition, which they use in England to try and combat the litter louts in England, and we're not allowed to do it in Wales because of some legal technicality. And I'm sure the big authorities like the Cardiff Swanses would probably love to do that, but we are not allowed to do that, the Welsh Government will not allow us to do that, which is a shame. Similarly, the bottle return thing or whatever we look at bringing in in the next century is going to be the answer to what blight we've got out there. That's the answer I was given anyway. But I welcome the officers, I think we had some great discussion there, and I do welcome the Cabinet member to sit down with the council very soon to give us some answers, how we're going to take this forward on the blight over there. Even coming in from Llancael, from Chambridge to Llancael, there was a massive pothole there coming in today, and I didn't have to give it a whack. And I think many members in here were probably seen that pothole. Hopefully that may be fixed. I did speak to somebody who was doing some gully sucking on the highway there, asked him could he report it, whether he's done it or not, but if not, I'll try and share that up. So, yeah, I mean, that is a major issue for us as a council. All the other things are important, but I think for residents, we cannot turn a blind eye to what we're going to do with the structure we've got out there. We need to start to put a plan in place for the next five years, let's say, and gradually, gradually build on it. I just want to go back then to our amendment to the budget proposals by councillor Taylor this afternoon. Yes, okay, I welcome the two-year long-term support for child psychology, but as councillor Taylor made it, and she was quite right in what she said there, this is from young age up to 25 years. This is not up to the young persons, it's up to 25 years. One individual will have to manage all that portfolio. They're going to slip through the net, there's no doubt about that, people will slip through the net. And that's why I had to support that amendment, that we need to find at least some more provision for at least an extra post or half a post. You're talking about somebody who's going to deal with young, young individuals up to 25 years of age. It's not possible, it is not possible. I welcome the extra funding for our guys out there who are going to do the bits of work, but as the Cabinet member made it very clear, that ain't going to last. We might have agreed it now, that may get cut next week, we do not know that. We need more of them teams out there, we need more of them. And that's what keeps us this authority and this county as it was, and it will always be very precious to many of us, and very precious to people who come into the county and spend their money, they spend lots of money here. I'd just like to say as well, going back to the formula that Wagga are using through the WLGA, I think it is, somebody prompted if I'm wrong there, we need to address that. Mary Ann, your Cabinet, you've got plenty of influence down there now, I think we need to sit down with WLGA, whoever our representative is, and make sure the Welsh Government can give us a formula that works for us. It's impossible. Guys, we cannot continue the way we are, it ain't going to work. I don't care what anybody says, it's not rocket science, we cannot continue for the next 12 months unless it alters dramatically. How the heck can Torvine, our partners, who we work with, who we have service level agreements, operate the way they do? Because they have lots, lots more money per head going into their budget. So you guys, you're in charge, and I will respect you for that, and I always will, whoever's in charge, I will respect you for that, but you need to get down there and sort the formula out, because next year, we will be back here. And I'll tell you what, you blink, it will be here, and we'll have the same conversations, and we'll mark your card to make sure that you get it right. And if you haven't got it right, you will be in the same predicament again. I will support you when I can, same as everybody in this chamber, we will support you when we can, but if we can't, we will tell you so. And as somebody has a different kind of vocabulary and a language, I'm a northern boy, I will tell you straight as well, there will be no hiding from me, I will tell you straight what I think and what I believe in for Monmashia. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Howard. councillor Garrick.
Thanks Chair. So, there are 10 people in particular there in this room that I would like to thank. Sorry, you're all normally moaning, you can't, I'm too much on top of the microphone like this. Can you hear me here? Okay. So there are 10 people in this room that I would particularly like to thank. They're all sat at the front of this room looking at us, and our officers have put in an inhuman amount of effort in the last week. They have lost evenings, they have lost nights, they have lost sleep, they have seen some intense stress over the way this council has chosen to do this business, and I thank very much every single one. Sorry, people having difficulty hearing me? Okay. I just want to thank every single officer here for the effort that they have put in and the amount that they have put up with over the last week, or the last, well, over the last week, for the way that this council has done its business. I'm very sorry, colleagues, I've just lost my speech, I've gone to the wrong place, bear with me. Okay. So, I think we've now got to the position where we are, have learnt lessons. As I said in this chamber last week, I have played this with a straight bat, and I have encouraged consultation and engagement by councillors in this chamber, outside of this chamber and across the floor. We've now achieved that, and I thank every councillor for leaning in on this. So where we are, on this side of the chamber, we are representative of the Labour and cooperative parties, and it is a long-held belief of our parties that cooperation is an essential part of democracy. Council, I genuinely believe, especially in a balanced council as we are, that we are better together as a council than we are as some parts of it. I'm therefore pleased that we've had genuine conversations over the past week and are able to make accommodations in our budget which reflect the opinions of those who represent different views and approaches, as we can now move forward in a balanced way, which stays true to our original intent in this budget, one which steers the council through the greatest financial storm that it is seen in its existence as Monmashia County Council, and accommodates the opinions and opposition, opposition groups to get what we believe as a room should be the best for this council and this community. I want to thank everybody for that, and I'd also like to take the lessons learned from this. I don't think it is fair that officers of this council have had the most intense week they have seen, probably in the entirety of their careers with this council. I would like to move forward next year to a more collaborative approach, where we can actually talk to each other as human beings and councillors in order to get to a position where, yes, we can agree and disagree where we need to, and actually move forward to the business of providing services for the residents of this council that put us here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. councillor Taylor.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I too, absolutely, on behalf of the group, would like to thank officers and indeed members of the council, the Cabinet and the other opposition group for the contributions that we have tried to make during this budget process. I have to say, you know, the leader commented that a week is a long time in politics, and indeed it has been this week, and I would suggest that unless we can reach a position such as councillor Garrick just suggested, where there is more genuine cooperation and collaboration, that unfortunately, it is going to be difficult, and that's not what we envisaged, and not what we, any of us opposition groups set out when we began this journey in this council. You will recall that we all stood here suggesting that when we were comfortable and we felt that the Labour administration was doing the right thing, that we would be supportive, and when we felt that there was room for improvement, then we would try and work with that, but we would not support matters that we didn't feel were correct or right for the residents that we represent. Delighted to see that there have been some accommodations in the budget, and hopefully, perhaps, that represents the start of a genuine desire to work together, because we have heard those words, but we haven't really seen necessarily the fruits of that being delivered yet. I want to comment on the last meeting, because I do think it's important, and I think I want to say that I did, you know, take it upon myself to speak to all, both leaders, to suggest that we get the council that we deserve, and last week was not a council that I wanted to be part of. So that did indeed delay some of the conversations that we were able to have, but I'm pleased to say that there was still, you know, for us, it's not who gets the medals that counts, it's really whether we can reach positive outcomes for our residents, that's the most important thing. And I'm hopeful, this has been a much more to-date, generally pleasant, meeting than last, so I'm hopeful that moving forward, that that's what we will get. I would like to say that I think the Chair's done a very positive job in quite difficult circumstances, and long may that continue. I would, but I would like to say, our group has heavily engaged through all the means that I quoted last time, which I won't go into, but that we still, as has been set out, felt that there were parts of this budget that were really difficult. I don't know if councillor Grau could misunderstood me, I wasn't suggesting that we add capacity in order to do a specific part of the work, I was saying that the additional requirements set out in the bill do perhaps require us to think more creatively, so I'd like to clarify that. But broadly speaking, the two areas that we were sad to see, we couldn't accommodate further, were absolutely the areas of social care. We still feel that that, as councillor Chandler has pointed out, while some of those savings will be delayed, the difficulty in delivering them is- while some of those savings will be delayed, the difficulty in delivering them is severe. The impact will not be mitigated and we have not seen mitigation to date. We understand there's going to be an improved budget monitoring process. However, I think I might have heard that over a number of budget setting meetings. So I'm really interested to see what will be different about that moving forward. And I think it's a really important point because the possibilities for in-year movements are really, really significant. Councillor Buckler has eloquently set out the concerns that we set out in a motion almost right at the beginning of this administration, where we asked that the administration write to the Welsh Government around the fact that our aggregate external finance per capita is significantly lower in this council. And that does place a heavier burden on our council tax requirement from residents, whichever way you wish to cut it. And I do hope, as some other members have suggested, that during this term, we will be able to move on that. In particular, the matter of delivering services to more rural residents. Because that is important and it does in particular impact in areas like social care. And I have to say, we weren't able to particularly amend the social care changes. We appreciate there has been a million pounds, but that is only to delay the savings. It is still unclear where those savings are intended to be made. And that is something which we find particularly difficult to support. Finally, I'd really like to point out that the reserve position is an enormous concern. We did hear councillor Garrick set out that there would be immediate action to consider how we can rebuild our reserve position. We haven't moved to hear anything about that and I think it will be vital that we consider that. Given the potential for changes, in particular in the in-year position with social care, we will not, we will not be able to do what we've done previously and support shortfalls in our budget through significant reserve take. We just don't have the resilience to do that. Therefore, and I suppose it's important to say, that the decisions we've taken today, the position on council tax, the position on take from reserves, will resonate for a very long time. Unfortunately, I can't support the current situation. But I just want to put on record that I understand the difficulties. I appreciate the accommodations. But for us, for me personally, they don't go far enough. I'm afraid I'm not in that position where I want to argue about who's done what to who over a year and which government is responsible. I'm just interested in doing the right thing for residents. And I do understand that everybody in here is also. However, please can we limit that discourse and debate? It really offers us no solutions. It just adds to the time it takes and it just is, can be, you know, quite unpleasant. So thank you for all the work that's gone into this budget. It is certainly better than it was before. But I think there's some lessons to learn for the future in respect of improvements in the consultation process, how we engage early, how we recognise that we may have difficulty in setting the budget and we set meetings and appropriate structures and opportunities in place early on, which really do give the opportunity for meaningful interaction and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Now, I don't see any other hands up, but I know Teams has been playing up a bit. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillors. I don't intend to say much. As I reflect on what's been said in council today, three points emerge in my mind. Firstly, I think we should all recognise the robustness of our democratic process and the fact that we can have this debate and have had this debate on March the 2nd and now. And that's important. It is absolutely important that every councillor feels they have a right to speak, feels they have a right to make comment, feels they have a right to make contribution, feels they have a right to hold the administration to account. And I think on that level, we have shown a robust process and one that I think should continue. It is not the idea to shut down debate. It should never be the idea to circumvent accountability. And we should never look at ways of making our policy behind closed doors. It is through scrutiny and it is through the council. And we have, I think, come to a position today where we can set the budget. And that brings me to my second reflection, which is when it is important to pull together, that's what we did as a council. We recognised that we have different views, we have different principles, we have different priorities. But we came together responsibly to set a budget for the good of our residents. And as I said in my opening speech, so that we did not continue to disrupt the business of our officers. I think we all agree that the real heroes in this process have been the officers. Because my third point is that we all acknowledge that these are sobering times for all of us. We cannot go outside after this vote and raise our fists in congratulations because we've got a past budget, because we are facing one of the worst crises in a generation across the whole of the UK. We have set a budget for difficult and challenging times. And as I reflect, there are many useful suggestions that have been made across the chamber for what we can do going forward, both to ensure... I'd like to pick on something because there's many things we need to ensure here. And I'd like to pick up on something that councillor Griffith said last week. Innovation is not a noun. It's a verb. It's about what we do every day as a council, embedded in how we work and what we need to do to adapt to changing circumstances. And we all agree on that and we continue to do so. Adaptations were built into this budget. Those adaptations will be clarified, will develop and will pick up on the many suggestions here and that will be made over time in working groups, in scrutiny and other mechanisms that we may choose to work together. Secondly, I think we agree that a process of collaboration must be the watchwords as we move forward. How we work that out will take discussions. And what we showed over the last week, the sitting down together as human beings with a focus on what is best for our residents allows us to come to decisions which we can live with. And I say that because it wasn't easy to set the budget. Nobody wanted to be in this position. Nobody wanted to be faced with having to make those savings or consider the impacts. I will bring you back to our starting point. Twenty-six million pound deficit, having to find ten million pounds in savings. We were not alone. This was across Wales. This was across UK. It's, um... I'd like to say pride, but that's not quite the word. There are councils across the UK who cannot do that at the moment, who cannot come to a budget which is legal and balanced. We are. And that's taken as pulling together. And remind you of the concessions that we made. Not in the sense of being held into account, but in the sense of responsibility of working with you. And I would thank you for the robustness of the debate and look forward to working and collaboration as we go forward. Thank you, council.
Thank you, councillor Brocklesby. Councillors, we will now move to a vote. Councillors, that report is carried and now we are going to take a break, Right, Councillors. Hello, Councillors, welcome back. We are now going to take a council tax premium for long-term empty properties and second homes. councillor Garrick.
Thank you, Chair. A woman's work is never done. Okay, so this is something that we as Labour and cooperative councils have been committed to for years. We have the House in Wales Act, which allows a council to implement additional premiums on empty and second homes. And that is twofold. One, there is the option to raise additional funds, however, that's not the main driving part of this. The main driving part of this is to look to free up housing in local areas in Wales to address housing shortages. Council, we have a housing crisis. You will have seen during our budget process that we have significant, significant pressures, cost pressures on housing. We have too many people sat in bed and breakfasts across this county and this piece, this paper looks to address this. Consultation shows that we are not alone, in our opinion, as well. In the case of both empty and second homes, the majority of consultancy respondees agreed with us. In the case of second homes, sixty-seven per cent of consultees agreed that an additional premium, a premium should be placed on second homes. Forty-three per cent of those respondents who believed that were clear that their preference was to set a three hundred per cent premium on empty homes. Eighty per cent of those respondees who agreed with the premium requested a minimum of a hundred per cent and a range between a hundred and three hundred per cent. There is a lot of opinion backing this. And I'd like to bring you to your attention some of the responses of our consultees. So here we go. For instance, a number of houses in our village have been empty for several years. We are seeing young families who are bought up in our village, yet can't stay in the village and are forced out. Again, another responder came with absolutely, in the terms of setting a premium on empty homes. There are a number of empty homes in Wysheam, which have been unoccupied for over ten years. We have families desperate to stay in the area but have limited options. A further consultancy responded that empty houses should be in use to house people that need them. It's a waste to have an empty house, there's no reason for it. And again, further consultancy responded, empty properties bring no economic or social benefit to the community and the council tax premium can start to make up for that benefit the residents. Fifty-seven per cent of our respondees also asked for the implementation of a premium on second homes and they provided a similar split on the preferences of the level of implementation in terms of council tax premiums. Their responses included, it would help reduce the house prices, making them affordable to local residents. In this case, people locally should benefit from the houses available. They cause a surge in house prices and stop younger people from getting on the housing ladder in our area. Another consultancy stated, it deplete, second homes deplete housing stock for locals. A third consultancy stated, it would provide limited additional income, but it will discourage further homes being lost to the housing market as second homes. And that is, Council, where we are in this terms. We have a lot of support for this particular paper publicly. We're proposing that we adopt a ramping approach for empty homes. We are suggesting a hundred per cent premium at one year, a two hundred per cent premium at two years and three hundred at three years. We are also looking to implement that immediately, so any home that has been empty for that amount of time would come under this scheme. In the case of second homes, we understand whether popular consultation response was set as a yes and we're sympathetic to that and have therefore included that into this piece, into this paper, and I will cover why in a moment. But we are reticent to go ahead fully with this without full in-depth analysis and would like to take time to understand and to the impact on the local economy on this in terms of second homes. However, the legislation requires that we provide homeowners with a year's notice of any change and therefore it's necessary to bring this paper today in order to be able to enact changes in twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. We would commit on the terms of second homes to do further study to see whether this is appropriate and would maintain the ability to wind back the proposal from us, which is a hundred per cent premium on second homes as well. That is the long and short of this paper, Council, and I would therefore ask you to debate its merits. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Garrick. councillor Birch.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important to say that the majority of owners of empty homes will not be affected by the proposal to levy a council by the proposal to levy a council tax surcharge. Because each year there are several hundred homes that stand empty for a brief period because they're awaiting renovation, sale or letting, or other homes of people who are in hospital or care, or of people who have died and their, their will is going through probate. And these properties will continue to be exempted in the same way that they are now. This proposal is targeted at the four hundred or so long-term empty properties which could become a home for someone. Because for years, the housing options team have written periodically to owners of empty properties offering support to bring those homes back into use. They've offered to lease appropriate properties for, use for homeless families, they've offered support and the possibility of a loan for repairs if required. But often these overtures are rebuffed or ignored by the property owner and the property stays empty. And as has been said, long-term empty properties are a blight to their neighbours and a lost opportunity for our communities. I believe that to tolerate homes standing empty while we have families in bed and breakfast hotels is wrong and we can see from the consultation that most citizens agree. I hope that I will have your, we will have your support in this. Because every time we've discussed homeless, housing and homelessness in scrutiny or working groups in this chamber, councillors from all parties have asked what we're doing to bring empty properties into use and asked me to ensure that we do more. So here it is. And part of the reorganisation of the housing options team is to put more time into bringing empty homes into use and to relaunching the Monmashe lettings brand. And I anticipate that we will also be relaunching the council's home improvement loans shortly. So we will now have the ability to work more intensively with property owners who will have the option to sell or to renovate or to rent out the property. But past experience tells us that we need the stick as well as the carrot. And that's why I'm asking all members today to approve the proposal to charge a stepped council tax surcharge that will eventually mean an additional three times council tax for anyone who chooses to leave a property empty for more than three years, a property that could be a home. And as councillor Garrick has said, if this is approved today, the owners of empty homes will be given a year's notice of its introduction. So that's a year to sell, to renovate, to lease or to occupy that home before facing any penalty. The report estimates a potential income of up to 1.6 million from this measure and we, from the debate earlier, we all know exactly how we could make good use of that revenue. But I'm really hoping that we don't get anything like that. I would be quite happy if we never charged a tripled premium on any empty home in this county because they all came back to use within the next year. Because, but I hope that what is the prospect of what is a hefty penalty, even for some of the wealthier landowners who own some of these homes, will be enough to change behaviour and bring homes back into use. Let's see those empty homes lived in. Turning to the second homes proposal, there was a strong response to the consultation on second homes as councillor Garrick said. In Monmashe, we don't have the same problem of second homes as some other parts of Wales. But we do have a situation where rural young people are priced out of the housing market, both for rental and for purchase. And the use of a property as a second or holiday home when it could be the home of someone who lives and works here is bad for the sustainability of our communities. Again, there are numerous exclusions. The charge will not affect properties that are not suitable for full-time residential use or that have a planning or other legal restriction affecting their occupancy. It will in fact affect relatively few properties but it will give an important signal to the market. A property owner's decision whether to use a property as a second home to let it to tenants or promote it as a holiday let or Airbnb is easily changed and regulation can give a nudge to that decision. Because currently we are frequently seeing the impact of long-term tenants being evicted so that homeowners can use the house for holidays or put it on Airbnb. And that impact isn't just a cost to the authority, it is children's schooling disrupted and the stress and cost of potential homelessness. I want to push that regulatory lever back and this measure will help us to achieve that. But, a great deal of concern has been expressed about the impact on holiday lettings businesses and the potential interaction of this measure with the plans from Welsh Government for a compulsory registration of holiday lets and the new regulations around holiday lets and business rates which come in this April. I think we're all very aware of the difficult climate for hospitality and tourism businesses at the moment and this is a very fluid, fluid situation. My current understanding is that very few genuine and established tourism businesses will be affected by this measure. Because either they will be exempt, for instance, the farm holiday let which would be unsuitable for permanent accommodation, or they'll continue to be registered by business rates. But we need to do more detailed work with the tourism sector to understand this situation develops and I would suggest that we review it towards the end of the, the summer, summer period in the autumn. So I'd like to thank Ruth Donovan and her team who've investigated the current situation and prepared options for cabinet and run a very thorough public consultation. Every person who was registered as a second or empty homeowner was contacted as well as seeking the views of the wider public. The cabinet have discussed in depth the erudition and workload involved in implementing the measure and have been assured that it is proportionate and workable and easily covered by the additional revenue anticipated. But it did lead us to the view that to have implemented a charge that was nominal rather than substantial would have required the same administrative burden without having the same effect, which is why we've brought forward the proposal today. I'd also like to thank Nicola Edwards, Monlice Food and Tourism Strategic Manager, who has conducted the in-depth consultation with businesses in the tourism sector and will ask her to engage with the sector again before coming to a final decision on the proposed charge. We've been given these powers so that we can influence the housing market for the benefit of people who live and work in Monmashe. So I hope we can pass it and use those powers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Birch. councillor Neil.
Thank you. So long-term empty homes that could potentially be brought back into use in our county seem like a really good plan and a really good idea. But as with any change that may have a major impact on certain residents, certain people that, that own these properties, it needs to be well planned and properly implemented. And as things stand, there remain some very important unanswered, unresolved questions. At the Performance and Overview Scrutiny Committee, we considered the proposals at some length with many issues raised from committee members and many unresolved. What we know is that there appear to be around four hundred long-term empty homes identified and the consultation that has been carried out resulted in a total of currently three hundred and twenty responses, of which apparently just twenty-nine were owners of long-term empty properties, twenty-nine of the four hundred. So around three hundred and seventy or ninety per cent of those owners provided no response. They were not engaged in this. It's hard to believe that any such owner would fail to respond and what is clear is the likely reason why as the consultation took place online. So as things stand, at the point that the, that the administration is looking for a decision from council, ninety per cent of those homeowners may very possibly, indeed I imagine probably, be unaware of these proposals. They'll probably read about them in the newspapers. Which would grant powers to the council to apply, as we've heard, a premium of up to three hundred per cent of council tax. And I note the relish with which councillor Birch started with the indication of just how much additional funding that would bring into the council. This seems not only unreasonable but bad planning and bad process. It must be a concern too that it would leave the council open to challenge. At the Performance and Overview Scrutiny Committee, I raised a question regarding the legal guidance from the Welsh Government that we appear to be following. It states in section twelve A of paragraph sixteen that, and I quote, "occupation of a dwelling for one or more periods of six weeks or less during the year will not affect its status as a long-term empty dwelling." Think about this, "one or more periods of six weeks or less will not affect its status as a long-term empty dwelling." And I gave the example of an owner who occupied the property twelve times in one year for four weeks on each occasion, which would be forty-eight weeks of the year and according to the legal guidance, this property would continue to be designated long-term empty. I think that a reasonable person would consider this as just plain daft, but it also potentially leaves an authority enforcing such a policy open to legal challenge. At the Performance and Overview Scrutiny Committee, no clear response was given to this issue. Potentially an important undermining flaw in the legal guidance from the Welsh Government. But it would be Monmashe County Council who would be responsible for applying it. We asked about situations where properties could not become occupied for reasons beyond the current control of the owner and some of those examples councillor Birch was indicating, such as when a property is subject to probate, which can take a very long time to resolve, beyond the control of the, the owner. Or when the property is subject to planning approval. And those as exceptions were not identified among the exceptions within the report. And many long-term empty properties require substantial building or improvement works before they can be occupied. The exceptions listed in the report don't cover these really reasonable issues so we recommended that not only a discretionary exception be included but also an appeals process again, so that the council is acting properly and reasonably. These are important, unconsidered and unresolved issues and to commit to a policy subject to a future cabinet review appears entirely the wrong way around. We should do our homework before we sit the exam and make decisions, not the other way around. Just because the administration is now facing a deadline, effectively today, for the implementation of this in April 2024, is not a good reason for bad policy, poorly thought through or badly planned, to be decided upon. You should have brought this forward at an earlier stage and done the homework at an earlier stage, not put the council in a situation where we're being strapped to a barrel. It's not only good practice and good sense to do our homework first, but it is more likely to avoid those unintended consequences. And I think the administration's already encountered a few of these. I strongly support efforts to develop more affordable homes, but let's ensure that we know what we are doing before we commit. We know from Tudor Street, for example, what happens when proper consideration is not given to good process and proper practice. We need proper pace, not half-thought haste. A plan to introduce this policy in April 2025, not April 2024, would give the council time to do its homework properly and therefore I urge that councillors vote against this as a, as a proposal. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Neil. councillor Lucas.
Me again. I would like to say thank you very much to Alison, the councillor, for his remarks because I concur. But for me, the one thought that I have consistently had on more than one occasion since becoming a county councillor and one of the reasons why I wanted to become a county councillor was the engagement of our residents. Now, we talk about consulting to our residents, but when it's always online, I'll often have people say to me, "well, it's online, how do I find it?" And they get very frustrated by this. I have raised this already in the working groups, but now I raise it again in full council. Please, please, and it's not a huge thing, I'm quite sure we're more than apt to get this done with ease. Can we not, when we have an online consultation, put it out on our emails? For example, this week alone, I've had three emails from MCC telling me that the latest planning application within a set mile radius of my home has gone into, come to the planning office, or my bins are going to be collected, or my bins are next going to be collected. So if we can do that for rubbish bins, why can we not put this out for all consultations across the whole of our county? It seems an easy thing to resolve, something that would include everybody or a large proportion of our residents that already actively use this service that we provide. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lucas. councillor Callard.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to add my support to this proposal. Time and time again, when I was out canvassing for the elections in May, I heard from residents who said, "I wish my children could live near me because, because they'd really love to, but there simply aren't the properties available and they're too expensive." And I think this is a really key development in, to try and level the playing field in order to not only make houses, or incentivise more houses becoming available in our county, but also trying to address the demographic imbalance that we have in our county, which we know if it continues will cause us, you know, it will cause us more problems down the line in terms of how we finance this council. So I think it's a really good proposal and I'd encourage all councillors to get behind it today.
Thank you councillor Callard. Any more contributions? councillor McConnell.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair. Yes, we, we do have a crisis, a housing crisis. Like my colleague councillor Callard, I'm more than aware of the abject misery of homelessness and I'm in touch with a family now who are in bed and breakfast accommodation, who were made homeless through absolutely no fault of their own in my ward. It's catastrophic for them and their children and will have lasting damage on them, I believe. I should also say that the housing department here are doing a sterling job supporting them and doing everything in their power to help them. But we just have a crisis. So there is need for haste, there is need for haste, call it crisis management if you like. I noted, I noted councillor Neil saying that, suggesting that my colleague councillor Birch was rubbing her hands with glee at the idea of the raised revenue. I think I very clearly heard councillor Birch saying that she would happily forego any raised revenue for freeing up those properties to meet the desperate need that is in the community. I also do share concerns about the way that some consultations are done and it would be great to improve the reach out. However, if we are, if we're going to consider a concern and not all the property owners were consulted with, I would like to say we might make sure that every homeless family in this, in this county and every family desperately looking for accommodation were also consulted with, if that was going to be a measured consultation. And so I'm, I'm for, I'm hearing the, some of the criticisms. I think there is time to refine, to refine our approach going forward, but I think this is an incredibly urgent issue and I would encourage a vote in favour of this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McConnell. councillor Powell.
Thank you Chair, and this isn't a simple thing to do. It's all right to say there's plenty of empty houses and we've got people wanting houses so what we do is we commandeer those houses and put them in there. But the sad thing is, many of those houses have been let go because they've been empty for so long, they needed money spent on them and then when they are done up, they're far pricier than people can afford. And now that makes it even more frustrating. It's not as simple as saying, "there's people homeless there, there's empty houses, pop them in there." There's much more to it than that. And many of the houses that are unoccupied, as I think Sarah said, haven't been decided, they've been, somebody's died and there's been probate, there's been all sorts of things and time is of an essence and that's why they're left empty for such a long time. And once they are empty, they will be sold. As I said, many of them are at a price that the homeless people wouldn't be able to afford to buy. So I don't know where we get around that problem. It'd be lovely to say, yes, they can go into those houses, but somebody's got to buy the house, somebody's got to pay for it and then rent it out to the, the people and it doesn't always work like that. I don't know what the answer is. I wish, wish there was a better answer than that. They're all little houses that you could put somebody into, it'd be ideal, but very often these empty houses aren't little and they very often want a lot of work done on them. So there we are, I'm sorry to put a sort of damper on it, but it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Powell. councillor Watts.
Yes, yes Chair, thank you very much. I mean, all the arguments about probate and, and some of the delays that unintentionally happen, could I accept frustrate the, the process here? But, you know, I mean, we've had this conversation many times, we know the average working age in Monmashe is forty-six. many times, we know the average working age in Mamashia is 46, we know we've got a disproportionate elderly population, and we know that eventually we'll all fall off the cliff, and that's not, I'm just not talking about the members in this room, about the demographics of how old we are. But we do need our family around us. We all agree, I think, collectively, that the essence of British society is, is family, and the traditions that come with that, about supporting our family as children, from the, you know, from the, from, you know, from the cradle to the grave, really, so whether you're looking after the babies until elderly people. And as we find out, talking to the NHS, we know that people, much like myself, actually, are looking after elderly relatives. So we need some form of better structure, putting the politics aside, to basically support communities, rebuild communities, and establish communities in a kind of traditional way, if you like. So I'm happy to support this legislation, something needs to be done. I'm sure there will be difficulties, I'm sure there will be exceptions, but we have to make progress on this, Chair. I mean, it's very difficult to, except certainly in my ward, some of the traditional older people that lived in that community for years, people had moved down from the valleys, that moved into Bulwark and Thornwell, their children can't afford to live in Chepstow, they've had to move to Newport. And it's the same wherever you go, whether you go to Bristol or Bath. Bath is another example, those people moved out to Froome, those people that traditionally lived in Froome now live elsewhere in cheaper accommodation. So it's a dysfunctional, I know we all agree on this, it's a dysfunctional housing market, which is effectively a pyramid scheme, that we are trying to play around with. So I'm sorry if that's a little bit conceptual or ideological, but that is a problem that we all face. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Watts. Councillor Fuchs.
Thank you, Chair. Just getting back to my notes. I think that councillor Birch and councillor Garrick have put forward very strongly the reasons why we need this, and as councillor Watts has just so eloquently said, rebuilding our communities is something we need to do. We have increasing numbers of people who are homeless in our community. The fact that 1.6 million pounds could be raised from this is helpful. And I think that the point that councillor Powell mentioned about this being tricky and difficult to implement, I think Ruth Donovan and her team are incredible at implementing very complex payments. For example, on some of the payments we've had to do for the cost of living have involved very complicated workings, and the payments have been made to people, there are systems in place. I don't think the officers would have recommended that we could do this if those systems weren't in place. So I think we can, we can work out the actual physical payment of these things. And I'd just like to bring you to a comment made in the consultation. These are homes that could be occupied by local residents who contribute day in, day out to our local economy. Second homes are a luxury. If people can afford second homes, they can then afford a premium for the privilege. So I would just urge all our councillors across the chamber to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fuchs. Councillor Howarth.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the document today. It is a shame it's got to be agreed today, because I think it rightly said that there is a little bit more work to be carried out on this document, and I won't disagree with that. So whether I can agree today, I'm still, still minded to listen to the debate on it. Couple of points I'd just like to make. Anybody heard of section 21, where landlords can evict, we fill in a form and then sign in it? That needs to be altered. I'd sooner work on that with both governments to try and rectify that, to make sure people who are in accommodation, that they have still the right. Landlords want to sell the property, things are difficult out there for everyone. Landlords are offloading properties for whatever, the housing market is stagnant, and even this week, they're saying how its prices are, where the interest rates are gradually rising again. My two children, well, not children, I wish I could have found something last night for them, but I didn't. I'll never get rid of them, because they can't even afford to go into the cheaper accommodation, because nothing is cheap. You're talking, everything is expensive. I don't believe that what we're doing here is going to raise monies, and I don't believe it should be ever built around that. Let me tell you now, if people can afford to pay three times their ratable value, they can afford lawyers and barristers to challenge this with a judicial review or whatever they want to do, and they will do that, there's no doubt about that. Some people will have other avenues to, to carry out what they want to do with their property. Airbnbs, they will look at that and think we do that. You will not get properties handed over or want to, want to be used into the system quickly, is what we need. It's been talked about, we need a quick fix, this isn't a quick fix. And I would sooner get this right than have a quick fix, and I don't think it's a quick fix. Thank you, Chair, and let's see whether we can progress at a later date with this. I'm sure whoever is demanding that we do it now, I'm sure there's a little bit of leeway in this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howarth. Councillor, I'm sorry, councillor Bryn.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to offer my support for this proposal, as since my election, I've had a number of families in my ward that have been made homeless through no fault of their own, and are in urgent, urgent need of local homes. Emergency housing is currently many miles away from Wysham, away from their community, and away from their wider family, and more importantly, away from the schools that the children currently attend. As councillor Garrick stated, there are currently a number of empty properties in my ward. If these proposals nudge some of these homeowners into doing something with their properties, I and the families in my ward would welcome this, not as a fundraising exercise, but as a means to free up housing for those in need. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Bryn. Councillor Chandler.
Thank you, Chair. I think councillor Neil makes some good points, and obviously I was part of the Performance and Overview Scrutiny Committee that looked at this proposal. It is rushed because of the timetable that requires us to make a decision before the 1st of April, for it to be enacted before the following 1st of April with council tax. It is indecisive about the position of second homes, which I think is, has its own challenges, and is certainly right that the Welsh Government legislation, in terms of how it defines empty homes, could certainly be a lot better, and they've not helped themselves, and they've not helped us in that. Having said that, there is, I also see that in the proposal and in the powers, there is discretion that where we can deal with some of the grey areas and some of the exceptional circumstances that has been talked about. And I do recognise that urgency to tackle our housing crisis. I would be very reluctant for us to delay for another year in order to, before we can start, to put this particular lever in place, not the only lever, I hope, that's going to tackle our housing crisis, but one of the levers that we need. So I think my conclusion is, is if the cabinet, if the responsible members of the cabinet are committed to introducing an appeals process, as was recommended by the Performance and Overview Committee, then I would be minded to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chandler. Councillor Sandals.
Thank you, Chair. Just to answer councillor Lucas's concern that apparently we weren't, you know, we could be emailed in future, can I just draw your attention, please, to an email from Comms on the 18th of January, which included a link to the press release and a link to the actual survey, just in case you thought that we weren't all being consulted and we were. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sandals. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, it's, it's really difficult, we, I think, having, listening to the debate, we absolutely agree that there's, you know, I certainly agree that there's a need to move on, certainly the empty properties in the county. We all, hearing councillor Bryn's point, it would be, however, much better, in my view, if some of the points raised in scrutiny were included in the paper, for example, the, the, you know, explicit, being more explicit about the discretionary powers, and also being clarifying, I think, the, sorry, my eyes just gone like, the, 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 the ability for us to, to effectively implement those into the paper that we have in front of us. And I don't think that's there, and I think we've just seen on a couple of occasions where we've got scrutiny, good quality scrutiny, happening in our committees, but not all the points are being taken on board, and that is making it much more difficult for us to support proposals that in principle we may support and see the absolute need for and concur with, but because they're not perhaps fully formed, we appreciate why this is being rushed, but it would be so much more palatable, I think, if we could really understand the consequences, because sometimes unintended consequences can bring with it much greater problems than we, than we solve, because we all want to see empty homes brought back into use. But we're noting the consultation responses equally, you know, the, the narrative is really helpful and helps us understand what some people really wanted to express, but equally, the, the numbers and the balance in those consultation responses are not overwhelming either. And I note councillor Garrick's point, that where properties have already been empty for some time, they will be subject to, for example, if they've been empty for however long, they'll be subject to that charge immediately that the, that the policy comes into force, which, you know, without knowing and without having engaged in more detail with some of those, some of those people, I think, may be quite difficult. So I'm certainly slightly torn on this. I would like to be able to support this, to, to, to be able to go through today, I understand why you want to bring it forward, but it's just difficult. But you've heard, there are members of the group, you know, we absolutely are hearing the debate on its merits, and will, will have to support accordingly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Bond.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to support it, well, I do support it, I was on the scrutiny committee, and there were some issues which were raised, which raised, sorry, which could improve the document. However, I think we just need to learn from that and accept it how it is, because it's workable as it is now, and, and we know that the housing crisis is absolutely desperate. So we need to do something, we need to get cracking on this. And the other thing, I just wondered, if some of us have second homes or any properties that, you know, not be any of these 400 or whatever, should we be declaring them now, I wonder? Thank you. Or declaring and not voting, you know what I mean? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bond. If I could just hand over to you for a second.
So, sorry councillors, just to, I suppose clarity as much as anything else, there have been a couple of inputs about the role of scrutiny. Is it worth just re-pointing out for everybody that para 2.4 in this report, recommendation 2.4, does suggest that the observations of the scrutiny committee are incorporated as this work is taken forward?
Point of order, Chair. The chief exec is nicking my summing-up speech. Please do continue. My phone is going to be still by the end of this.
In which case I withdraw.
Thank you, thank you for that. Can you just answer the other question, please, about whether we should declare an interest, and whether everyone can vote?
We took a, I asked for declarations of interest at the start of the meeting, so I'm going to assume good faith that people would have declared it if there were one. Councillor Lucas, we've heard from you already, so I'm assuming it's an accidental hand. If it's about the discussion with councillor Sandals, I'd ask you to do that outside the meeting, just so we can keep things going. Thank you. Councillor Buckler.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief, I promise. It concerns me that this is being rushed through. We all, all of us here, you know, we're councillors for a reason, aren't we? We want, we want to help our residents and people who need our help. We're not against helping homeless people, and we want to do so. To have that emotive level when we're discussing something that's been pushed through, I don't think is very helpful. I think it should, we should have more engagement and thought. I mean, we want in Mamashia to be a welcoming place with the interests of our residents, small businesses and visitors balanced and considered. Decided to decide something so important that changes the, you know, the sort of landscape of Mamashia in this rush manner does us, does no good service to our local communities. It's a blunt instrument as things stand, and we can do better. And the responses from purely online engagement were not properly indicative, and the residents of Mamashia will feel they have not had a proper say. I vote against it because of that, not because elements of it are worth pursuing and, you know, putting in place, but as a whole, it worries me very much, this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Buckler. Councillor Ruck.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies, I have a cold at the moment, so I'm a little croaky if I'm not understood. Empty homes are a blight on our society, they add nothing to the social fabric of a community, and they contribute nothing economically to the viability of an area. They attract unwanted attention from vandals and hooligans, and, excuse me, and as such, need to be brought back into use. I would bear no bones about it, if you can afford to have an empty home in Mamashia, you can afford to pay the extra premium, tax them, tax them to the hilt, as far as I'm concerned, we need those homes. 400 houses empty in Mamashia would address the housing need in Chepstow alone. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Ruck. Councillor Grokot.
Thank you, Chair. A brief observation, a couple of people who have commented on the quality of the responses that have come in, have said it's because it's been online, and that makes things difficult for second homeowners, because they're either not used to using email or checking things online. Is there an irony that if you're a claimant for Universal Credit, you have to do it online? If you're a Mamashia second homeowner, somehow you don't even know how to use the internet or email?
Thank you councillor Grokot. Any further contributions? No, back to you councillor Garrick.
Thank you. Okay, so just returning to what the chief exec was saying, so just because I feel I did cut you off, I'm very sorry for humour, and that's just completely unfair. So we have included in the paper the consideration of a discretionary policy to assist homeowners in exceptional circumstances, not covered by that specific guidance, and consideration to be made of the establishment of an appeals process, which we can do. We've also included the need for website information to signpost property owners to any help that the council can offer to bring properties back into full-time use, which I think is an incredibly important piece in terms of the consultation itself. It wasn't just online, every single registered homeowner affected by this consultation was sent in writing a letter to inform them of this consultation as well, and they were therefore able to both online and through letter respond. In terms of councillor Neil's concern, we did do some clarification on this after scrutiny committee, so basically, in terms of the furnishing or occupation of a dwelling for one or more six weeks, periods of six weeks or less during the year, it will not affect the status of a long-term empty dwelling. In other words, you cannot alter the dwelling status as a long-term empty dwelling by taking up residence or installing furniture for a short period of time. It's known as a six-week rule, and is there specifically to avoid that. It's in order to stop taxpayers artificially occupying premises or furnishing premises for a week of six periods of less, in order to allow for a break in the empty period so that a hundred percent charge, as opposed to the potential premium, and it would, would be avoided, and so it also refreshes the empty home period for 12 months. So in terms of the implementation, council, we have a year. So in terms of the implementation, council, we have a year, this is the beginning and this is an indication. We are indicating a maximum potential position to homeowners in this paper, for second homeowners and we can take additional, we can take additional time now to take a decision on what that means for economy or we can take an additional year to procrastinate rather than having a clear programme to define and take action. I am in favour of and I know my group is in favour of taking action now. I'm frustrated in the notion that the council would want to take up more time than necessary to make this decision when we have a programme and have a clearly stated programme of how we can progress. I will again reiterate that this was an open consultation that any resident could access and it was in addition to the online consultation that we sent those letters. It also remains a fact that the majority of residents who responded, those are our residents who responded, they absolutely want this and I would caution council not to vote against its own residents or to do so at its own peril. I know that our Labour and cooperative councillors shall not be doing so and we will be supporting the opinion of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Councillors, that is carried. So our next item, we will move to the 2023/24 capital strategy and treasury management strategy. Councillor Garrick again.
Thank you Chair. Which one was this, sorry? It has been a very long process, I'm sorry councillor.
Capital strategy.
Thank you very much, I am so sorry everybody. Okay, so councillor, the strategies were considered by the governance and orders committee in February and we've got a summary of the feedback provided by the committee included in paragraph five of the report, it gives no significant changes. You have the detailed capital strategy for 2023/24 in appendix one and it sets out the longer term context in which we will make capital investment decisions and demonstrates that we as a council take capital investment decisions that are in line with our corporate priorities and gives due consideration to risk, reward and impact. In the current climate of our financial constraints, which we are all painfully aware of, our capital investment needs to remain within affordable limits. Demand for those capital resources remain high and therefore inevitably prioritisation of projects, leveraging in other sources of funding and working with partners remain key to meeting this demand. In terms of the capital budget, the capital medium-term financial plan and strategy work together towards a financially sustainable core capital programme whilst balancing the need to deliver capital investment plans in line with policy commitments and need. When considering the relative merits of further capital investment, the priority matrix highlighted within our capital strategy will be applied to ensure a consistent approach to our capital investment which looks to address the most urgent and significant needs. All of our capital expenditure that is incurred must be physically financed and once internal financing such as capital receipts, reserves and revenue and external grant financing have been reached, the authorities' only recourse is to borrowing. The overall proportion of borrowing costs within the revenue budget is considered sustainable and is fully costed into the revenue medium-term plan. In terms of our ongoing development programme, we're all aware of our continuing funding constraints for local governments and it's important that we as council understand the key risks and the future aspirations of our capital investment. These are captured through our plans and strategies across the council. It's also important to consider the requirement to maintain our council's current asset base. Our constrained funding levels in previous years has resulted in a maintenance backlog which gives rise to the potential for major asset failures to occur where issues have developed over time and we must be cognisance of that. There will inevitably be other priorities to be considered for inclusion within the capital programme over the medium to long term. With the next phase of the Welsh Government Sustainable Communities for Learning Programme and further regeneration schemes that will require substantial match funding commitments, the consideration to support such priorities will need to be carefully balanced against other competing demands. In terms of our treasury management strategy, you also have that in appendix two. The treasury strategy remains very similar to previous years such that the council will remain a net borrower from the market and utilise its internal resources to reduce net borrowing costs. For our borrowing strategy, short-term interest rates are currently lower than long-term rates. It's likely to be more cost-effective in the short term to either use internal resources or to borrow short-term loans instead. This will form the key borrowing strategy for 2023/24 as it has done in previous years. The council has previously raised the majority of its long-term borrowing through the Public Work Loans Board and expects to continue to do so in the next financial year. Those loans are no longer available to local councils planning to buy investment assets primary for yields and our council intends therefore to avoid this activity in order to enjoy its access to the Public Work Loans Board. We are legally required to approve an authorised limit for external debt each year. This authorised limit is the absolute maximum amount of borrowing that can be undertaken in order to manage the overall day-to-day cash requirements of our council. In addition, we set an operational boundary which is the expected level of borrowing required to finance the current capital programme. Based on the capital programme that we're proposing, which recommended that we approve the authorised limit and operational boundary noted in the report. We have an investment strategy and the improvements investment counterparty list and limits are shown in the treasury strategy. The investment limits proposed complement the authorities' objective of striking an appropriate balance between risk and return whilst minimising the risk of incurring losses from defaults and the risk of receiving unsuitably low investment income. The counterparty ratings and limits are further informed by market information alongside bespoke periodic advice from our treasury advisers on the sustainability and financial robustness of specific counterparties, which brings me to our environmental, social and government's policy for investment. So we made a commitment in this council in September to investigate how responsibly the council invests its cash balances and to develop a sustainable investment policy that is compatible with the council's declaration of a climate emergency and the Wellbeing of the Future Generations Act. The council's treasury advisers notes that the current framework and the data sources available to enable a robust assessment of investments are still immature. Alongside this, many of the investment funds and bodies are multifaceted which makes the current evaluation increasingly challenging. The council will therefore continue to engage for the next financial year with our advisers Arling Close to evaluate our existing investments and assess whether a more sophisticated ESG policy can be applied. The government's audit committee will be kept informed of our progress through regular reporting of treasury performance into the committee. So whilst the policy continues to be developed, the council will continue to prioritise banks that are signatories to the various charters that are noted at present in our strategy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Councillors, does anybody want to speak to this? No? Okay, we will move straight to a vote. Councillors, that is carried and last time, Rachel, councillor Garrick.
Excuse me Chair, I'm just going to take a little bit of water to lubricate the pipe, sorry. Okay councillor, I'll be as quick as I can for this.
Oh sorry councillor Garrick, just, oh sorry.
Oh sorry, sorry. We love you all greatly, you're fantastic people, we're very sorry to do this to you. It wasn't something I said, was it?
Nope, whoa, sorry. I'll just wait for the queue, sorry.
Okay, I'll try to be brief on this one, I'm aware that this has been a long one. So for the past 12 years, legislation's required that every council publishes a pay policy. It means that we have transparency of salaries as a chief exec and those who are on the chief officer pay scales, the range of pay scales and the lowest level of pay in this organisation or any council organisation and also the relationship between these categories. The paper also sets out the results of our latest pay negotiation. It can be marginally perplexing on first glance as we're talking about the 23/24 policy but we're referring to the 22 to 23 pay settlement as that settlement has not yet been agreed. Council should note and particularly for those of us who have not been through the process previously, the MCC sets levels of pay through our participation in national negotiations which are coordinated with the local government, sorry, the Welsh Local Government Association with trade unions. So there's no local negotiation in this as a council, it's a national level and local government pay is not subject to a pay review body. The policy here is a statement of fact rather than proposal or a strategy but requires our ratification and therefore the recommendation is that council approves the policy which includes the individual basic levels of salaries of officers within the scope of the Joint National Council for chief executives of all local authorities and individual basic salaries of all officers within the scope of the same council for chief officers of local authorities. You have those figures in your report which you are at liberty to check as well. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Garrick. Any contributions? No? Right, straight to the vote again. Right, our next meeting is on the 20th of April, our business for today is done. Thank you. Yes? Councillor Garrick.